Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for this Monday, May 20, 2024 Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Hearing. Bear with me while I read through the meeting procedures. All persons in attendance at the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrate/ off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the PCBOA meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The Chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 PM on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the PCBOA will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. The Planning Commission business is conducted first, followed by the Board of Adjustment business. The Chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The Chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicant to come forward to the presenter's table, state his/her or their names and address for the record, and explain his/her or their request. The Planning Commission will then, Board of Adjustment will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The Chair will then ask for public comments on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker per agenda item unless the Chair allows a speaker additional time. The Chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the Chair recognizes a speaker, she or he may approach the audi- audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant. All comments are to be directed towards the PCBOA. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The Chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the PCBOA, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the PCBOA. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the Chair will close public comment period on the agenda item, and no further public comment will be taken after this point. The Chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address the issues raised during public comment. The PCBA will then discuss its op, just continue its discussion on the agenda item and the Chair will entertain a motion on it. The PCBOA may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the PCBOA will develop findings of facts for conditional use permit and variance applications and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the PCBOA will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 PM. No new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45. The PCBA BOA may at its discretion continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 PM. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date or time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The PCBOA through the Chair may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or an agenda item. Okay, thank you very much. First, we will start with the Planning Commission. There are no minutes to approve and no old business, so we'll jump right into the new business. Conditional use application two dash CU-24 by Cal and Amanda Handyside. Part of the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter, section thirteen, township one thirty-nine, range thirty-five, straight river township near Moran Lake, a natural environment lake. Parcel twenty-five, point one-three, point zero-one-one-one-zero. Applicants are requesting a conditional use permit per section four oh one, table one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed professional service businesses use. Okay, the applicants, you may come to the presenter's table, please. Thank you. You may state your name and address and then go ahead and give us a description of your request.
Cal and Amanda Handyside, address one-three-three-six-seven Book Trail, Monaga. I guess, request wise, we started last summer, we were in to have the shoreline ordinance amended in order to be able to consider putting a professional business at the old Fair Havens clubhouse, which we had purchased now from Dwayne Becker. We, I guess, are just kind of continuing from the process last summer and dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's, so we're hoping to move our vet clinic into there. We have two vets on staff, primarily large animal. We see a little small animal, and that's what we're going to be mostly using that building for. The space we're using now, we've outgrown in terms of just storage and the ability to put more than one client in there at a time comfortably. It's not quite a mile from our house, so in terms of doing after hour, like, large animal emergency type stuff, it's a really great location for us that way.
Thank you. Okay, just to, for the record, I'd like to reiterate what the applicant said. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to operate a veterinary clinic on the northwest corner of the property. An administrative subdivision was recently approved to allow tract one to be created, and the deed to creating a tract one was recently recorded, and it will retain the existing parcel number. The septic on the property is compliant and sized at three hundred gallons per day. And it's adequately sized to accommodate the structure's proposed occupancy and also abuts county one-eleven. You plan on using that loop driveway, an entrance on one side and an exit on the other?
Correct.
Perfect. Just would like to state one other thing, that the property is in the one thousand feet shoreline jurisdiction of Moran Lake, the natural environment lake, but it lies wholly outside of tier one. So the proposed location of the use complies with the requirement in section four oh two point one, four point A of the Shoreland Management Ordinances that a professional services use can be locate, cannot be located in tier one of a natural environment lake. And as they have stated, we've passed that, we've already went through that procedure. Does anyone have any questions at this time for the applicants?
This is Ken, just one. What are your future thoughts, or thoughts in the future about any additional structures that you might want to add to the property?
Currently, we don't have a ton of plans for that. Most of our large animal work actually takes place further south, so I think if we were to go towards a bigger, like, large animal facility strictly, we would actually take it towards Wadena Staples area, so that really doesn't leave a ton here. Potentially, a cement pad to put horse stocks in, that's kind of our only, only additional plan at this point.
The garage that's there now, what, what's, what's in there and what's your, that's, what's the use of it?
We had actually not wanted to purchase that garage, but because of where the septic sits, we had to take it, so we have no plans for it. We intend to put a freezer in there for...
Some storage for cars, and that's about it.
Dwayne Becker stores vehicles in there currently and...
Okay.
This is Tim speaking. In the future, do you, do you think there would be a need for you to hold a large animal overnight for boarding? And would it, would it be a hardship not to be able to do that?
We don't tip, as of now, we don't keep anything overnight, even in terms of small animal, just because we're not set up to do it.
Is there a situation where you would need to, being medically, medically for an animal?
The only thing that I could see would be like a, possibly a small calf that we could put inside a room, just if it's like dehydrated and we put like an IV fluid line in. But when it comes to cows, those are all, usually always managed on the farm. And then any horses that are severe enough where they'd need to stay the night, we refer to like a NOKA equine, because usually they need more complete monitoring than what we would be able to give them, so to say.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open for public comments. And seeing no public comments, I will close public comments. We do have some recommended conditions that staff has prepared. Have you had a chance to read over those in the report? Okay? I'd like to go over those with you if you don't mind.
Think you should, think you should read them so they know what they...
Absolutely. Yep, so number one, the conditional use permit is for the operation of the entire premises on one professional, as one professional services business use venture consisting of a veterinary clinic. As such, any land through subdivision or addition to the property to which the CUP is granted, is added or subtracted, is or are not allowed, granted or allowed the right to operate in accordance with the CUP without first applying for and obtaining the necessary CUP from the county. Pretty basic there. Number two talks about your hours. This will be year-round, just as your prior place, okay? And you have in your application eight to five, Monday through Friday?
Correct.
And emergency large animal services occurring on the weekends possibly, but those are usually done off-site.
For the most part, yes.
Sure. Okay, so number two would possibly read the business will be open year-round. Business hours are eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, with emergency large animal servicing occurring on weekends. Number three, do you have any questions on that, or is that pretty much straightforward?
That's, yeah, straightforward.
Number three, no overnight outside boarding of animals or overnight boarding of animals that allows animals to freely access the space outside of a structure is allowed. We visited about that, you don't currently do that in your other place, and you don't intend to do that, so you're okay with that condition?
Yes, we are.
Number four, vehicles entering and exiting the property via county one-eleven for purposes related to the veterinary clinic professional services business use must use only those two existing driveway approaches located on county one-eleven. No additional vehicle access points on the county one-eleven are allowed. Number five, the veterinary clinic customer vehicle shall only park in the area labeled as parking, six to ten vehicles on the application site plan sketch, pretty much where we visited during lot views, where you had it.
Yep.
And you would park over by the garage?
Yes.
I would definitely add a number, a different number six, for the signs shall meet the requirements of the Hubbard County sign ordinance. Sure, you already, you already talked about a sign, you threw out some dimensions, I don't know if those meet the sign ordinance, you know, requirements, but again, you would have to meet the sign ordinance requirements anyway, so might as well just throw it on there. We had a little discussion with, about the structures.
My, my thought was that, that I'm sure sometime in the future, they may want something, I would, I would maybe add a, a condition that any future structures that are, that are put on the property must be dedicated to the, the use identified in the conditional use permit and be, and be compatible with the capacity of the SSTs. That gives them flexibility, but, but the structures have to be dedicated to the business.
Perfect.
And maybe a final comment, I don't think noise or anything is, we usually address that, but in this case, I don't think there's any need to add that.
Anybody else have comments on structures? The tract one created by the recent administrative subdivision has almost five acres, four point seven-five. Its closest point to Moran Lake is five hundred and fifteen feet away, so the business would be located entirely outside of tier one, which complies with the requirements in section four oh two, point fourteen, point A. I don't see any, the need of restrictions either on the CUP for the additional structures as land use permits would be pulled and setbacks would need to be met. However, I do understand Ken's views, making sure they're compatible to the use and then following the septic guidelines. Conditions two through five, all areas of arc, of concern are covered with the hours of operation noise and minimal animal waste. Can you tell me the last part of your septic on the, on that?
I just said compatible with the capacity of the SSTs.
So basically, his recommendation on a condition just means you're still allowed additional accessory structures, as long as they're compatible to your veterinary clinic use, and they would still meet the criteria necessary for the septic, make sure your septic's large enough to handle it. Any other questions? No?
We have, what, seven conditions, right? You added the one about the signage.
Right, I added the one about the signage, and we have yours with the additional structure. So I will reiterate those, so. Just for supporting statements, this location is well-suited to the proposed veterinary clinic use. There is existing mature tree coverage along most of the perimeter of the property, aside from the central portion of the west boundary and the property that fronts county eleven. Again, we have conditions in place for no outside boarding of animals to help with the noise levels and no overnight boarding, so. And again, that the property is five hundred and fifteen feet from Moran Lake at its nearest point, so. Any other questions or make a motion?
This is Ken, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the county board, acceptance of this condition use permit and, and adopt all of the findings of the environmental services, of the questions to be considered.
And you're going to go through with the conditions that we stated?
Yes, and, and with the seven conditions that have been identified.
This is Mike, I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ken to recommend approval to the Hubbard County Board of Commissioners for the CUP application as presented with the conditions that we outlined. And we have a second by Mike. This time, I'll take a vote. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
And Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye.
Let's see what Eric is putting down here. Better than I said.
Perfect. Okay, looks great. All right. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the conditional use application three dash CU dash twenty-four by Heartland Lakes Community School. Part of government lot four, section twelve, township one forty, range thirty-five, Todd Township on Fish Hook Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel twenty-seven, point four-three, point one, zero-zero-zero-zero-zero. Applicants are requesting a conditional use permit per section four oh one, table one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to operate a school use. Could please have the applicants come up to the presenter's table and state your name and address and proceed with your request.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Joanna Wallenberg, three-one-seven-nine-five, County Highway fifty, Park Rapids, Minnesota.
I'm Sarah Shonsby, I'm two-zero-four-one-five, Flintlock Drive in Park Rapids, Minnesota.
And we are both board members for Heartland Lakes Community School, so as Veronica said, this is, I'll just give a little detail about the school, which I think I gave you last time I was here, but I should have saved it for tonight. So Heartland Lakes Community School is a free public charter school, planning to open for grades kindergarten through sixth in the fall and then grow eventually to kindergarten through eighth. Our school is, has a couple of focuses in Minnesota, the statute allows charter schools to exist for the purpose of innovation in education, so the way we plan to innovate is kind of in a couple of ways. One is environmental learning focus, so our indoor classrooms will also have outdoor classrooms, and our students will spend a lot of time exploring and learning outside, making the camp location a really ideal spot for us. And then in that and with the outside, they'll learn through something called expeditions, so it's both a curriculum and a delivery model of learning in public schools where kids learn through expeditions that put all the subjects together through one kind of general topic. So those are a couple ways we're going to innovate with our students at Heartland Lakes Community School. The conditional use permit for the camp, we plan to use existing camp structures, so nothing new will be created at the camp, and those are all det, should I go through the details of that? No, no, he's like, we're going to be here a while. So those buildings are outlined in the, in the application, along with the growth plan, how that fits into the septic plans. Maybe I'll just leave that until, for your questions? Is that enough information?
You're doing great.
Okay, I mean, I could keep going, but I don't think anybody wants me to do that.
You've done great, I appreciate it. Okay, just for the record, like I said, like, the applicant mentioned the application requests a conditional use permit to operate a K through eighth grade public charter school use on this large riparian tract that lies on the east side of Fish Hook Lake, opposite the Headwaters Golf Course on County one. There is an existing legal non-conforming use that operates on the property, which is the Northern Pines Assembly Grounds, and this non-conforming use consists primarily of seasonal summer church camp with the other events and activities occurring throughout the year. The proposed school use will not take place, will not replace the non-conforming church camp use, but it's proposed to be an additional use occurring on the property. The school use would occur in four of the existing structures, like you'd mentioned, Red Pine Lodge, New Wesley, Cornerstone, and Susanna, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. These loc, these structures located in the south central portion of the property. And we currently went through, prior to this conditional use permit, we recently amended the Shoreland Management Ordinance to allow the school use as a conditional use. I also want to put on here that the performance standards all have been met, as we have received approval from the county highway engineer giving you approval for the use, so that performance standard has been met as well. Do I have any questions from my colleagues?
The question about water usage, if I understood, when we were out there, the meter has been installed for, for water? Okay.
Yep, yep, it has.
This is Tim. Is there any state agencies or anything that regulate anything for what you're doing here?
Yeah, good question. The state, as a public school, the state has to make sure the building meets E occupancy code, building code. So, yeah, we're actually working with a architectural firm in the metro who has lots of experience doing that, so the plans, currently the Red Pine Lodge plans are at the state for their review, and really, they're looking for like fire, it's mostly focused on fire safety.
Okay, so how far away help would be?
Exactly, yeah, and then in the building, like, even the, the drywall needs to be the one hour, one hour fire rated in the corridors, so, so there may need to be some switching of drywall if it's not already, if it doesn't meet that standard, but those types of things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions at this time? I think for the record, I'll go ahead and open for public comment. Yep, you have public comment, go ahead and please come up to the podium. State your name and address, and please also write it on the sheet there, on the login.
My name is Elizabeth Smith, I'm representing both myself and my husband Philip. We live at one-five-three-oh-one Forget Me Not Drive. So we're at the very end of Forget Me Not Drive that you enter to go on the south side of the church camp. We've had a wonderful relationship with the church camp. We love hearing the kids in the water screaming and yelling and having fun over the summer. Our concern is, number one, when I was reading, or my husband was reading through those pages, he noticed that it said there were only three summer residences to the south of the camp. There are three summer residences, but we are a full-time resident, and we use that Forget Me Not Drive as our ingress and our egress all year long. And I think our main concern right now is when I hear that there's going to be a school, and we also read that there is going, there will be only two school buses, I think they said, and the school buses will be the ones that come on Forget Me Not Drive, any mothers, aunts, other people will have to come in through the Methodist Church ground entrance. Having been a mother of a school aged children, I know that I went in and out of places I wasn't to go, and it has us a little bit concerned. Also, we value our privacy. We are surrounded by woods, and the woods that we are surrounded by have been donated to the campground. And I would just like maybe some discussion or assurance that when the students are there, they're not, you know, it abuts our property, they have acres and acres, so I'd love it if there could be some kind of stipulation that the, the church camp activities, whatever they might be, would be, you know, two hundred, four hundred, five hundred feet, because there are acres and acres, so that should be able to be accomplished, I would think. I'll put my name down here if anybody has, if you have any questions for me. But those are our main concerns, Philip? And Forget Me Not Drive is, just so other people know this as well, it's not a township road at all. It has, despite the fact I pay a lot in taxes, it has never been plowed by anyone other than the church camp. They do summer grading, but, um, we do summer or winter plowing. So it's, it's really one lane wide. And so to get in and out of there, if there are, if there's a school bus plus a car, it's gonna be a little bit difficult. So there's, there's gotta be a lot of thought put into how those school buses are gonna be coming in and out. And right now, I know you said it's just gonna be fifty kids and it's gonna grow to, how many?
Two hundred max.
Hundred and sixty.
Oh, sorry.
Hundred and sixty.
Yeah.
So I hope you can appreciate our concern in that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hey, I don't see any other public comments, so I will close public comments. We can go ahead and touch base real quick while it's fresh in our mind. Who currently maintains Forget Me Not Road? Since it is a private drive, I take it?
What I, I, they could probably help us with this. Sounds like some private plowing, but I know from the road to the camp, the camp staff plows. We could ask Liz if that's.
Yes, the camp.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is it okay if I answer?
That's fine, no worries. That's okay. I just was curi- I mean, if she said she maintained the snow plowing in the winter, so obviously you're gonna have to have snow plowing done for the winter for, during school years. Um, another concern of hers was the, um, the buses only basically. Does, do, do you have staff that's gonna be using that road to park back there too?
No, we plan for the staff to use the main camp driveway. The staff parking lot is kind of in between. You can access it either way, but we'll have them use the main camp drive is the plan.
Sure, and so what about food delivery service vehicles or?
I, I'm under the impression that the food is delivered to the camp on Forget Me Not Drive. Um, so we do plan to use kind of their routines that they have set up just to get a truck in and out.
Sure.
And I think that's how they do it.
How wide is Forget Me Not at this time? Do we have that information? Is it like thirty-three, sixty-six? Don't know yet, okay. I could see the, you know, having those questions arise, especially if that's an, an access that they have that they want blocked with, you know, buses and delivery trucks and so on and so forth. So that would definitely wanna keep that in mind um, as far as making sure there's enough room and you're not ever blocking the entrance.
Right, right.
Also, maybe something along the lines for business related or the school venture part, maybe a sign stating so that we don't have random people driving down there, say for bus use only or delivery vehicles on your property area. That would be a sug- a suggestion, I, I mean, a thought anyhow, so.
Yeah, and we've been talking about working with the camp on signs. They have signs, um, like indicating one-way drive, but we will add to them and make them clear. Um, yeah.
Did you come up with any numbers? No? Okay.
Twelve feet is what it measures.
So it is like single lane, basically? Does it appear to be a single lane road? Just like, no way to go around?
I was just driving on it this weekend, actually, for a wedding and it's just one.
Okay.
One car lane, yeah.
This is Larry, I guess I would like clarification on, does the camp, is there an easement? Who owns that road? Are we going to have troubles down the road with whoever owns it saying, nope, no more use?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Okay. It's on the camp property.
It is fully on the camp property? Okay.
So then there may be an easement for the property owners behind to use it? Maybe, don't know that, okay.
This is Mike Eric. Do we know what's the length from, from the county road of Forget Me Not?
It's three tenths of a mile to our property. So.
Nine hundred feet to the drop off.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or need more directions towards that comment? Well, we can move forward, we can put that aside and have you had a chance to review the conditions?
I just, to back, try to summarize that discussion. The only vehicles associated with the school that will be on Forget Me Not are the school buses?
Delivery trucks.
And delivery trucks, okay. How often are food delivery?
I would guess, oh no, I think weekly or every two weeks.
Oh, okay.
Once every two weeks or once a week.
Okay, but no other traffic associated with the school?
Correct.
Okay.
Does the, like sanitation facility utilize that road? Do you have trash service picked up or do you take it to the solid waste center?
The camp has trash service. We have not quite figured out if we, that will be negotiated on our lease with them if we use their trash service or not.
So currently, do they use that same road to get to the trash or it's curtained?
Good question. Is that where the dumpsters are? Like, just thinking back to being on the property, I think their dumpsters are back there. Um, but I, I would have to ask Leslie about their specifics, so I'm sure they get dumped back there.
Sure, okay. Just trying to keep, you know, how much traffic's actually used on that road, so. Any other questions? Okay. Have you had a chance to review the conditions?
Yes, that Eric sent, yeah, yep. Are they gonna go up? The water meter was corrected.
Okay.
This is Ken, question for Eric. The item eight under conditions, is that the satisfactory statement that covers your concerns that you had identified with regards to, um, water usage and septic? Are those set of conditions sufficient?
Eight would be one of the septic related conditions that are recommended.
Okay.
Yep, due to the, due to the dining hall potentially, when you look at state septic design guidance, it would say that the waste strength could constitute or meet high-strength waste. And so that's why that condition is suggested so that we can monitor that to see if it is or isn't. And if it is, get additional treatment added to that system.
I guess my other thought in terms of the proposed conditions, how do we ensure that all of the special provisions of section four oh one fifteen are covered under the conditions? Is that just natural or should we have a condition that says all requirements of section four oh one fifteen, uh, shall be covered? Do we have to put a condition in to do that?
It's not necessary, uh, since they would, those standards are listed in the ordinance and they would have to comply with them, but it won't hurt if you wanna be redundant.
Okay, and my final question is that, um, should we put, should we put a condition in that if the school, um, decides to no longer operate, uh, that the condition use permit is voided for any other future thing? Do we, do we need a, what do you wanna call it, a?
Yeah, a conditional use if granted is a property right, and so as long as the condition, as long as the permit can be met, the use can occur, so there could be a lapse in time. There isn't a way that you can say it is discontinued for lack of use. The only thing that we can do is what we have in the ordinance, which is a two-year window in which they have to get the operating permit. So if for some reason they choose a different location before they got going, then if the permit wasn't acted on within two years, they would, the permit would be void. But that's the only way legally that you can.
So we don't need anything special written for a condition, okay. I'm not planning on your feeling, but.
This is Veronica speaking. So as you mentioned, this is going to be, um, a free public school. I know that you've received funds to get started in the school for the five years. When those funds run out, how will you stay open if it's?
Yeah, good question. Um, so charter schools, like any public school in Minnesota, are funded on a per pupil allocation from the state. So, um, you get a certain amount of money per enrolled student. The reason that charter schools can get this startup grant that we've gotten, we have a federal one-point-three-five-million-dollar startup grant, is because as your enrollment grows and you get your programming going, anything starting, right, has some ups and downs. So they give you that, or that money is an opportunity you can receive, um, with the idea that at the end of that five years, your enrollment and your programming is stable and you're able to, um, to fund yourself. The grant sunsets out too, so it's biggest at the beginning and then it sunsets out to no longer be part of our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Can you scroll? I can see one through the other way.
Okay. I think we should go ahead and go over the proposed conditions, I, as we have them on the screen. Agreed?
Yeah.
Okay. Number one, the conditional use permit is for the operation of the entire premises. Parcel twenty-seven point four-three-one-zero-zero-zero, as one kindergarten through eighth grade school use venture. As such, any land through, that through subdivision or addition to the property to which the CUP is granted is added or subtracted, is or are not allowed or granted the right to operate in accordance with the CUP without first applying for obtaining the necessary CUP from the county. Number two, the outdoor classroom component of this school can use can occur anywhere on the outside area on parcel twenty-seven point four-three-one-zero-zero-zero. The school's indoor activities can only occur in the following four structures as stated in the conditional use permit application. The New Wesley, the Cornerstone, and the Susanna, and the Red Pines Lodge. Number three, the tots, total student enrollment in the school cannot exceed two hundred. I think I would like to add in there, um, when we get down, oh, it'll be the next one, nevermind. You, you did say one sixty, but two hundred is a good cap because that's what you max, correct?
Yeah.
What did you wanna add, sir?
Oh, no, no, it's, she did have one sixty. I'm gonna add to the next one, sorry. The school use can only operate within the standard time window, and this is where I'm gonna add, September first through May thirty-first. It's still gonna cover your public schools. That way we're just throwing that time in there. In which Minnesota public schools are open. The days and hours when the school use can be in session are Monday through Friday, seven AM to four PM. And after-school care is allowed to be provided, Monday through Friday between three and five-thirty PM. Occasional evening activities that are ass- are accessory to the school use, such as monthly board meetings, family activities, and monthly community events are also allowed to occur. Number five, any on-premises sign advertising the school use must comply with the Hubbard County Sign Ordinance. I think we should add in there, including the signs on Forget Me Not to state for delivery vehicles and bus use only. Just to kind of detour other patrons from just entering. Does anyone, do you agree with that? Yeah?
Veronica.
Yes, sir.
This is Larry, can I ask a question, um, to respond to your thoughts on the kids being right up against your property line? Can we put a restriction on that south side to not use all of that for your excursions?
Oh, absolutely. Um, during our lot views, the, um, applicants also said that most of the outside use is going to be right there inside between the buildings and maybe that, just that little recreational area, not going to be going out, but if we would like to put it in writing, that's.
There's so much space, we don't have to be anywhere near neighbors.
Yeah.
Okay.
So would you like?
I, I guess I would just like it to say then that in respect for neighbors, not abuse the lines.
Definitely.
So then, the outdoor classroom on number two. We need to adjust, possibly to cover the.
I think, was there something like a hundred foot setback in the shoreline management ordinance?
Structures.
Structures, okay.
Yeah.
Are you gonna add something to number two then?
Right, yeah. Do you have some proposed?
What's the verbiage?
That's what we don't have yet.
I read better than I hear.
I don't know if we wanna restrict it to footage or just a general, I, I don't know how to do a general setback.
About just that, no outdoor classroom activities can, uh, can occur within whatever foot we're thinking of the, uh, property boundary. I don't know what that is.
How much of that is wooded before it gets to the neighboring property? Do we have that map again?
Yeah, from the, from the last building they use to the property line would probably be a good way to. I can tell from here.
So just.
Those, those are three of the people.
What if we just say to not be south of Forget Me Not, does that work? I, I don't know how it lays in there, so I.
I think there's a, quite a bit of forest, like, up to the road. And that's that, that old growth forest that we would love to use, but it's way up to the road. It doesn't have to be anywhere near the other properties.
This is Mike Eric. What's the distance from the buildings to, uh, Forget Me Not? It's hard to see where the road is.
Fifty feet from the closest.
And what is, and where it's labeled Forget Me, the road is labeled, is that also the property line, I'm assuming?
Where's this Smith prop- where's this Smith property on here?
The camp also owns this down here.
Oh, okay.
So it lies fully within the camp property.
Which parcel is the Smith's property?
It's at the very end of Forget Me Not Drive. Uh, the yellow, looks like it might be our boundary.
Okay.
And so what we were concerned with.
It's okay, it's okay. Thank you. This is Veronica speaking. It is, it appears there's about a hundred feet from the neighboring, from the Smith's property line, at least with heavily dense woods.
I guess, uh, looking at it with the distances and the, uh, property lines defined, I guess, I, I'm, I'm not sure I'm need to see any kind of a condition regarding.
That's, that's kind of where I'm at, yeah. After we put it on, you know, let me have it on the screen here and there's lots of vegetation, several hundred feet.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that there's the need as well for that. If there's more comments that are being made, once it goes forward, there's poss- they can apply more conditions if they need to. Larry, how do you feel about that?
This is Larry, that's fine.
Ken, how do you feel?
Okay.
Okay, we are going back. I believe we are on number, yep, number six. Buses bringing students to the school and picking students up from the school can only access, enter and exit the property via Forget Me Not Drive. Personal vehicles bringing students to the school and picking students up from the school, staff vehicles and visitor vehicles can only access, enter and exit the property via the main driveway entrance to the property following the one-way traffic route shown on the sketch, labeled Traffic Plan Overview in the Conditional Use Permit Application. You don't have any questions? You mentioned that. No questions on that condition? Good, okay. You already had the water meter installed. So daily water meter readings must be taken on this meter at the same time each day as long as the sewage generated in the structure is discharged into the existing septic, septic system servicing this structure. The water meter readings must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department on a monthly basis during the school's first year of operation. And thereafter, daily water meetings, reading data must continue to be recorded and provided to the Environmental Services Department within five business days of being requested. Do you understand that one? That's where sometimes we lose some of our applications as far as, don't always get those water meter readings.
Oh, sure.
Very important.
Must be read, is that during, while school is in session, during the school year or year round? School year?
Do we, do we need to be concerned with the year round then? Eric?
Yes, because the system services the camp as well, but as far as, I mean, for the, this permit, it only pertains to the school use, so it would be during the school year. But it would be the property's owner's responsibility to also see that it's read daily during the summer months when the camp's operating.
Oh, I've got it, okay.
Okay, number eight, during the first year of the school use, operating after the school use has been operated for at least one month, during which meals have been served to the students and staff on the septic system servicing the Red Pine Lodge structure. The sewage in the last septic tank of each of these two series of three septic tanks in the septic system must be sampled by a Minnesota licensed SSTs professional and analyzed by an appropriate lab facility at least once to determine the sewage waste strength. And the results of said analysis must be provided to the ESO within five business days of the analysis having been completed. If the analysis shows that the sewage meets high-strength waste criteria as defined in the state SSTs rules, additional sampling and analysis will be required as determined by the Environmental Services Department. If subsequent samples continue to meet high-strength waste criteria, then appropriate measures must be implemented to reduce the sewage strength so that it no longer meets high-strength waste criteria, and the sewage strength must continue to be sampled and analyzed and reported to the Environmental Services Department as required by the Environmental Services Department until the sewage strength no longer meets that high-strength waste criteria. Get that? You gotta keep, basically have to keep sampling it, make sure it's not that high, high strength, and otherwise you have to, okay. All right. After the first year of the school use operating, since student enrollment is proposed to steadily increase through the school's first six years of operation, the sewage waste strength must be sampled, analyzed, and reported to the Environmental Services Department in years three and six of the school's operation per the above-listed protocol for the first year of the school use operating. Basically, that's making sure that that septic system isn't going to fail.
Great.
I want to make sure we meet all those.
Yeah, we want that too. It's good.
Documentation that the school has received approval from the state of Minnesota Building Code officials to be able to use the four structures labeled Susanna, New Wesley, Red Pine Lodge, and Cornerstone for the school use must be submitted to Environmental Services Department before the conditional use permit, operating permit can be issued. I think we need to also put in there that we need, for number 10 possibly, and this can, you guys can help me with this, but I believe we should have some, I guess, information on your road maintenance for that Forget Me Not.
Okay.
Just so that you have that as well. I mean, I guess, I don't know, is that even necessary? That there's just been concerns with the road getting plowed. That's, that's the school's responsibility since it's a private road, right?
It's on their own land.
It's on their own land, so we don't need to worry about that then?
No, but were they saying there's only like one lane?
One lane.
So something's gonna have to probably be done to make it so people can pass each other on, not even their own buses or.
Just because what if you have a delivery truck that's coming up when the buses are going out or trying to come out?
This is Grant Muggney, cover road.
No, definitely not.
Forget Me Not Drive must be maintained and provide the capability of allowing, I shouldn't say vehicles to pass, or buses to pass, is that what you're looking for? Maybe not the whole length, but at someplace along it.
This is, this is Mike. I'd be somewhat concerned based on what timber types we have there that we not get into some type of mandated swath suddenly being 33 feet wide or something. But if we're gonna go down the route, just some kind of pullouts, one or two pullouts established, I would be better with is that I see the traffic, if managed, is gonna be minimal opportunities, and I would be more concerned with just pullouts and then maybe a posted speed limit of, you know, 15 miles an hour or something very, very slow.
That sounds good. Somebody words with it.
So Forget Me Not Road must be maintained and provide pullouts.
For safe vehicle passage?
Yeah.
That was almost 1,000 feet if I saw before, so probably at least two.
If you leave it at plural, that means two and they could do more.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so Forget Me Not Road, maintenance must be maintained and pullout spots, pullout. Areas must be provided for safe passing? Yes, no, maybe?
Who owns that road?
The church, apparently.
Oh, they do, and the church owns that road?
I would have to clarify that with the church. I'm not certain.
They own the land on both sides of it. I guess that would probably be true. Is there an easement?
It's not a township road. It's a driveway. It's on the camp's property.
Eric said it's a driveway. It's on the camp's property.
Okay.
Yeah, Forget Me Not Road just needs to be, yeah, that'd be great. Must be provided to allow safe egress and ingress.
They have, like, when you drive down Forget Me Not Drive, we could ask Liz to clarify, because she drives down it more than I do. There's a couple, like, they have a cabin that has a little parking spot in one space, and then their entrance to that, like, staff parking lot. They have a couple of like spots that you can turn off of it onto things. Are those like pull-offs, passing areas, potentially?
Can you see that from the aerial map, maybe?
There's so much woods.
Spot where a vehicle could.
Could pull off, okay, okay.
While somebody else is coming down the main driveway.
Okay.
And then once that vehicle passes them.
Got it.
If the Smiths are coming out in the morning and the school buses are coming in.
What's gonna happen? Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any other conditions?
No, that's good.
Okay, that's good, okay.
We didn't need the, okay.
Do we have any other questions or comments from the members? I'm sorry, public comment is already closed. Okay, well, I, just for some supporting statements, I would just like to add that the, the use, will use the existing structures again on the property and will not involve in any new grading or topographic alteration of the property. The property historically has been and will continue to be used as the church camp that uses the outdoor portion of the property more intensively than what will be involved with the proposed school use. And the septic systems that service the four structures to be used by the school are properly sized for the structure's proposed occupancy and use. The property is quite large, 32.8 acres and heavily wooded. I think we've covered a lot on the application. Anybody ready to make a motion?
This is Mike. I'll make the motion that we move this on to the county board and recommend that it be adopted with the 10 conditions that we mentioned and accepting the staff's findings of fact.
Okay, and this is Veronica. I second the motion. Mike made a motion to recommend approval to the Hubbard County Commissioners for the conditional use permit with the conditions 1 through 10, and adopt the staff's findings of facts. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry. I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. Moving forward.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, that wraps up the planning commission session. We'll move on to the Board of Adjustments, and we have the approval of the minutes. The April 22nd, 2024 meeting minutes. Do we have any concerns or questions on the minutes? Don't believe we have any concerns on the minutes, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
This is Tim. I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made by myself to approve the meeting minutes. Tim seconded. Tim, how do you vote?
Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry. I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. The meeting minutes for April 22nd, 2024 have been approved. Okay, there's no old business. We're moving on to new business. Variance application 12-V-24 by Dan Martin, part of Government Lot 6, Section 15, Township 140, Range 33, Nevis Township, Parcel 21.15.00130. Applicant is requesting a variance from Section 704.3 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance and Section 4, the Subdivision A1-C2 of the subdivision ordinance to create a lot that does not meet the minimum lot area requirement. Okay, if we have the applicant, please come to the presenters table. Go ahead and state your name and address.
My name's Jim Voight, and my address is 2143 Fine Beach Drive, Nevis, Minnesota.
Okay, and go ahead and proceed with your request, please.
Well, requesting to buy a small piece of property from Dan Martin. One acre and one tenth or two tenths.
Speak into the microphone closer, or pull it closer, please. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, the request is to create a non-reparating lot that would be roughly 50,320 square feet in size. 80,000 square feet is the minimum non-reparating lot size on a recreational development lake. The proposed lot is 200 feet wide, so it complies with the 150-foot minimum lot width requirement. The buildable area is approximately 41,580 square feet, and 40,000 square feet is required. The proposed remainder tract exceeds all minimum lot size requirements and has an existing residence on it. Have you visited with Mr. Martin about making it a larger tract so that they both comply?
Well, Dan knows that I need whatever it takes to make this work. I, all I'm just, all I'm doing is putting a steel egg building on this land, nothing more. And the reason it's an interesting piece for me is because I live 1.2 miles away on Fine Beach Drive in Nevis. So it's very helpful to me, for me to get to it, you know.
What size building are you planning on constructing?
Oh, I'm not sure yet. I haven't gotten pricing, but not larger than 30. You know, the different building companies have like 32, 64, or some, 30 by 60, something like that. An egg building, a steel egg building, storage.
Okay.
A dry building, no septic, no water?
No septic, no water.
No heat? Yes, heat?
I got electricity closed, so someday I might apply electricity.
Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, at this time then I will open for public comment. If anyone has a public comment, please come to the presenters table. Seeing no public comments, I will close public comment.
You would, you close, yeah. This is Ken. Realizes this does not meet the minimum requirements, the 80,000 square feet, and that naturally it should probably just be denied because of that. We try to stick, not try to construct something that's non-conforming. But I just offer a thought. The reason for this larger size than what a reperian lot is, is to prevent overdevelopment, over-density on a lake, the 80,000, the double-sized lot. This does meet what a lakeside lot would be. If an 80,000, if we required 80,000 and it were there, then this lot could be turned into a living, a lot with living quarters, homes, whatever may be. And I'm just thinking since that little bump out would be convenient to allow, especially if we put a constraint on the fact that nothing could be built on that besides storage buildings of a size, let's say, anything less than 2,000 square feet with no living quarters or amenities such as waters, SSTs, sleeping facilities, et cetera. Electricity obviously would be okay. That I think it would probably be a win in the sense that we would restrict development in that probably second, third tier area, and there wouldn't be living there in the future. So this might be a good deal for us to meet what I think is the intent of the Shoreland Management Ordinance. Just a thought. And I know we do not like to approve something that, that is non-conforming, and especially when there is an option, it's hard to, to satisfy number three of the findings of fact. So, well, I open that for discussion.
Okay, does anyone have comments?
This is Tim. Do you or your family or anybody you know would ever want to store a camper there on that land?
I don't think so, no.
Because that would have to be added to the train of thought.
You mean it couldn't even be in the shed?
It could be in the shed.
That, that.
That's what the shed's for, storage.
And once electricity is there, it's one step from being a living area for. And once electricity is there, it's one step from being a living area for a camper, and then it's on an undersized lot.
This is Mike. I hate to see us opening up a can of worms where, where we may potentially see more and more of asking for these substandard lots. If my arithmetic is correct, it's sixty-three percent of what's required. I guess I'm having a hard time seeing for the use that's being proposed, why, why we'd go down this road to allow a substandard lot when there's other properties available where people can erect garages or storages if they so need to by permit, and I just can't find a way to answer the questions in the affirmative. So, based on, on its size, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of this application.
This is Veronica speaking. I understand where Ken's coming from as far as trying to save some of the area for further development. However, I do agree with Mike as far as it's difficult, we would have to place lots several conditions. The condition would be you can't have any living quarters, the condition that you can't have a camper, you can do this on this condition. I think, I agree, I think instead of applying so many conditions, trying to make this work, that the, the outcome, the, should just be divide, subdivided properly so that it can have two compliant tracks. That's the simplest way, in my opinion.
This is Ken. Have you ever discussed with Martha Martin as to whether he would give you another thirty thousand square feet? You'd bump into that a little bit on the, from the bump out?
Demi has, yeah, mentioned to Dan, Dan's here.
Yeah.
And mentioned to him that it's very little shortage of square feet, but I didn't want to, I was appreciative, I'd been looking for a year, and I was very appreciative that Dan offered this much for me. And I don't know, Dan.
Well, there is about fifteen, there is about, you know, fifteen acres there, so you're only, would ask him for another half acre over what you already talked about.
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking, I did a few of the calculations too, it's just not quite three-quarters of an acre under that, it's like point six-seven. That's just the rough size, then not including the buildable stuff, but anyhow, that's where I'm at as well, I think that.
You're saying how large is this piece?
I'm thinking you're just like, they've mentioned about three-fourths of an acre under. If it would be enlarged just a smidge more, three-fourths of an acre, you're gonna, it would be compliance and be able to subdivide and, and meet all of the requirements for a subdivision.
Yeah, that bump out's about fifty thousand, and you need eighty thousand, so thirty, thirty over forty, three-fourths.
Any other questions or comments? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
This is Mike, I make the motion that the application be denied and accept the staff findings of fact.
This is Larry, I second.
Okay, Mike made a motion to deny the application and adopt the staff's findings of fact. Larry seconded the motion. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. The application has been denied. You will receive a decision letter in the mail from the Environmental Services Office. Next item on the agenda is application thirteen dash B dash twenty-four by Lauren and Caroline Brorby, part of government lot eight, section twelve, township one thirty-nine, range thirty-four, Hubbard Township on Big Stony Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel fourteen point one two point zero one two zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from sections five oh one point two and five oh six of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for proposed guest cottage on a lot that doesn't meet the minimum lot area or width requirements, and section eight oh one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance article, v section one point zero of the subsurface sewage treatment system ordinance for septic tanks to be located within the required ten-foot setback from the proposed guest cottage. Okay, would you go ahead and please state your name and address for the record?
Lauren Brorby and Caroline Brorby. Our home address is eleven oh two forty-five seventh North in Fargo, and the address of our lake property is fourteen sixty-six, I believe it is, Coyote Drive in Park Rapids. We are requesting a variance to essentially complete the garage area to include a bedroom, a bathroom, and a sitting area above the main garage, which was, which was built in two thousand and eleven. That's the initial variance, our understanding is because it's under an acre, we need to receive a variance on that. The second variance, as indicated earlier, was the, the septic system is, our understanding is that it, the minimum requirement is ten feet from the building. It is approximately eight and a half feet from the garage where the septic system currently is.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is Veronica, how many bedrooms are there currently in the main structure, the cabin?
In the cabin itself, there are two.
Okay. In the cabin, there's that seven by twenty-four room that's on the side, on the edge, with all the windows and the two doors, what is it used?
That's a porch.
Okay.
Yep. There's a couch out there.
Is it used for sleeping quarters at all? Is it like a sleeper couch?
No, it is not, no.
Could that area be used for sleeping quarters?
Always a possibility, somebody could set a cot out there, yes, yeah. We haven't, but it's possible, yes.
You purchased this property in October twenty-twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay, for the record, the request is to be able to have a guest cottage on a riparian lot that is thirty-three thousand forty-eight square feet in size, forty thousand square feet is required, and a hundred foot wide, and a hundred and fifty feet is required. The guest cottage would consist of approximately four hundred and thirty-two square feet of the existing second-story space in the detached garage. The garage was constructed in two thousand and eleven and placed eight and a half feet from the septic tanks that serviced the cabin. A ten-foot setback is required from the habitated structure, so when the garage permit was issued, it included a condition that stated no living quarters were to be placed inside the garage, and the garage complies with the hundred-foot ordinary high-watermark setbacks. So Eric, if I'm reading this correctly and understanding, if the garage is left as is, storage only, no living quarters, it would not have to have the variance for the eight and a half foot setback, it could, it could remain as is. Once you put living quarters, we need to, okay, thank you.
And to clarify, in looking at the location of the septic tanks during the lot view, it's closer than eight and a half feet, it's, I'd say more in the range of three to four feet.
Okay.
At the nearest point, because the tank's kind of sit at an angle.
Okay.
Relative to the garage.
And again, that doesn't, not, doesn't involve it unless it has living quarters. Okay. Okay, do I have any questions from the board members?
Not necessarily a question, but it seems when we authorized the garage to be built in two thousand and eleven, we, we were very concerned about the fact that, that no living quarters of any kind should be allowed in the garage, just based on the size of the lot, and I don't see that condition has changed, so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, okay, I will open for public comment. If no one has public comments, I will close public comment. I have to concur with Ken's comments, when the garage was permitted, that might have been even put on the application or on the permit because the septic was close, I'm not sure when the septic was installed, I assume, does it say when the septic was installed?
It was two thousand and five.
Okay, so the septic was in place and the garage land use permit was obtained, so I imagine that they knew it was going to sit within the ten feet, and that's why the condition or stated on there, no living quarters, that would be my understanding.
This is Mike, I'm in concurrence with what Ken said, I don't see anything having changed, allow cor, living quarters.
What is on the, you have a second store, story, or a second story in the garage, what is there now?
Just storage.
Just storage?
Yeah.
There's steps up to it on the inside the garage?
Correct, correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments, otherwise I can move forward, okay? Again, I'm, I'm not supportive of the request either, as the lot is only two-thirds the required lot width and eighty-two percent of the required minimum lot area. Having the information provided to us with the land use permit on the garage and the septic location, I would be opposed and recommend denial on the application.
This is Ken, I'll second that.
Okay, so this is, I didn't quite make a motion, so I just was speaking.
Oh, I thought that was, I thought that was, oh, I'm sorry.
But this is Veronica, I can make a motion to deny the application as presented and adopt the staff's findings of facts.
Seconded.
Okay, Ken seconded the application. We'll take a vote. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. The application has been denied, you will receive a decision letter from the Environmental Services. Next item on the agenda, variance application fourteen dash B dash twenty-four by Eagle Bay Lodge, part of government lots five and six, section fifteen, township one forty-one, range thirty-five, Arago Township on Eagle Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel zero two point one five point zero zero three one zero. Applicant is requesting an after-the-fact variance from section seven oh one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for an enlargement of the structure devoted to a non-conforming use beyond the structure's plans approved in variance thirty-six V dash twenty-two. So if we could please have the applicant come to the presenters table. Okay, thank you, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Philip Scott, address is eighty-six thirty-four Vista Ridge Lane Northwest, Byron, Minnesota, five-five-nine-two-zero.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, can you please just go with, proceed with your request?
To my understanding, a complaint was filed, I screwed up in one major area. I don't know what I'm supposed to be addressing at this point, we approved, we were approved for a twenty-four foot by fifty foot land use permit. I had a cabin that was thirty-six with a fourteen foot screen porch totaling the fifty foot length. In an effort, after I was told that we would not have windows upstairs that we could see the lake, we chose to lengthen the cabin body and shorten the screen porch, staying within our fifty foot variance, or staying within our fifty foot land use permit distance, and in doing so, that added four feet upstairs also. And I was unaware that I had to come to the county and make that declaration. As stated, we stayed within our twenty-four by fifty foot land use permit that was also granted with a sixteen foot wide open deck, and the second complaint is the concrete platform underneath that deck. So I guess I'm asking to clear the record.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. Okay, just for, to reiterate and for the record, for a little bit clearer notation here, this is an after-the-fact variance, concerns a dwelling that was allowed to be rebuilt per variance thirty-six dash B dash twenty-two that was acted upon at the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two Board of Adjustment meeting. The land use permit twenty-two eight three four was issued on April third of two thousand and twenty-three for the structure approved to be constructed per the variance application thirty-six dash B dash twenty-two. On February twenty-first of twenty-four, staff conducted a site visit and found that the two-story portion of the new structure was built four feet, four inches deep by twenty-four feet wider, wide larger than the structure approved in the variance and the land use permit, and that the thirteen foot, six inch by eleven foot concrete lakeside platform was built below the lakeside deck, which was not presented in the variance application or land use permit application. These two components of the new structure are in violation of the variance and the permits. You received a violation letter was sent to the applicant informing him of these violations, and now here we are trying to bring them into compliance. I guess I would like to start off with the first, well, how about, we're gonna, let's, can I just jump right in and open for public comment, that way we can, yeah. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and jump out and open public comment. Anybody have any public comments? Yes, okay, please come to the presenter, to the podium and state your name and address for the record and write it down on the log, please.
Barbara Wagner, two oh two Sixteenth Street South, Buffalo, five-five-three-one-three.
Okay.
My sister and I own the cabin next to the new structure, and we were told by Mr. Scott initially, when he first approached us, that he would be within the footprint of the old cabin. Now, I took some measurements a day ago, and this cabin well exceeds the footprint of the old cabin. And then we have this extending wall, retaining wall, that comes out, what, another six to eight feet? And it's overbuilt for what the other surrounding cabins are, and Eagle Lake is a very small lake to begin with, and I just would encourage that you probably stick to your original permit, because we were misled in our initial discussion about whether or not that cabin should be rebuilt there. The association board was misled by the size of the cabin as well, and it sounds as though the county board was too. And so, we're here asking that if the permits are irrelevant and the rules and the guidelines of our resort and of the neighbors are all irrelevant, then I guess it's free, a free-for-all for everybody to do whatever they want, to maybe say, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, here I'll cut a check, and, you know, all will be okay. And I guess we all think, you know, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than wanted his permission, and we've all probably done that, been there. And at this point, I am, we're asking that you not just forgive this mistake. And at this point, I am, well, we're asking that you not just forgive this mistake and that we respect the property and look at the lake shore and the amount of population cabins like this will require in that, in that capacity.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chair, can I ask her a question?
Yes, sir.
I have one question. Were you, uh, were you in attendance and give public comment when he came in for his variance to build that?
No.
Thank you.
I didn't know about it.
I don't want any more questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, go ahead, please step up to the podium. State your name and address and please write it on the log.
My name is Thomas Feeley. Um, I live in, uh, seven eight oh eight River Ridge Drive in Tampa, Florida. And, and I'm not here to weigh in on how you as board should decide this issue on granting the variance. But I am here to advocate for some people that, um, would be significantly impacted by your decision tonight. And, and, um, those are people that don't even know about this. These are the people that are, uh, planning to come to, uh, to Eagle Bay Lodge, to Park Rapids during the summer because they have, uh, reserved cabin for, cabin in question, uh, for a week or two weeks to be with their family members. And they're expecting to have the kind of time that they've had in past years with their family members. And, and, uh, I, I just don't want to see them become collateral damage when they're, uh, they have no, uh, no part in this, in this particular issue, other than they're, they will be unable to be with their families when their families gather uh, at the resort. I know my family has come for forty-nine years to the resort. And we probably rent somewhere between ten and twelve cabins. I think this year it's close to that number. And we've been doing it for a very long time and it means a lot to my family, as I'm sure it does to all of the other families. Eagle Bay Lodge rents to lots of large families that rent multiple cabins. And if one family can no longer, suddenly loses that cabin, then it, um, makes it very difficult for those people and it's a great loss to them. So I'm, I'm asking you to consider that group of people that, uh, when you make this decision tonight and maybe tailor your decision so that they won't have to lose out. You know, they won't have, they will be able to rent this summer. I know that, that, uh, building is nearly completed. Uh, so, um, I'd hate to see those people unable to be with their families this summer when it would be easy, I think, to just delay, um, some of your deadlines, a month or so.
Thank you, Mr. Feeley. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, appears that there's no other public comment, so I will close public comments.
May I ask about the public comment that was mailed in?
Everyone has received a copy of, of the public comments that if you have something that you would like to address on it.
A couple of questions. He starts this letter out by saying, "we." I would like to know who the capacity of "we" is because he is on the Architect Committee of Eagle Bay. Is he sharing or representing the feelings of the Architect Committee of Eagle Bay?
Hi, this is Tim. I read that and I see that there's only one signature at the end of it, so I took it as one man's opinion.
This is Mike. I agree with that.
All right. And then, um, I will say for the record, um, it's very clear that, he says that he had, on the first paragraph, he had discussions with Hubbard County about a stop work ordinance on our cabin. And I would be disappointed to find out if Hubbard County was sharing information with him because they weren't sharing any information with me. But for the public record, there was never a stop work ordinance put on our cabin. In discussion with Demi, it was agreed upon, we would make, make no more further foundational structural changes. But we had to go ahead and complete the exterior of that cabin because this is a resort and we rent it out. And it could not just sit with white tieback all through the rental season. So we did make the decision to go ahead and continue the process of the cabin without making any major architectural changes to it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. I did not see that we had a stop work order, um, applied, so that we understand that, so, that has not had taken place. Okay, so I want to first touch base on during your variance application thirty-six dash V dash twenty-two hearing, we discussed the number of bedrooms allowed. So the first thing I'm gonna jump into is we discussed three with the current septic and five were not allowed to be built until the septic was updated to accommodate. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. It's, you have, during our lot bills, views, you clearly have framed in the bedrooms downstairs, even though they're still somewhat unfinished, they're framed. Also have installed egress windows. And you stated the basement would remain unfinished, correct?
It will be.
Okay.
Veronica, can I, I wanna, I know that the, the staff report talks about the, and he talked about the fact that they extended the, the house, the second story, the house, about four and a half feet and then that concrete platform. But what's not being said, which I think we need to understand, they increased the size of the basement by almost fourteen feet. The original permit, variance and permit, the drawings, best I can tell, it was open space under the porch and open space under the deck. And they have filled that in, so they've added, which to me enables at least one, maybe both of those bedrooms in the basement. But we can't lose sight of the fact that they, um, um, increased the basement size by almost fourteen feet. It comes all the way out under the screened in porch, which was on posts in previous drawings. So I wanna get that in the record.
Yes, thank you, Ken. I will be addressing that just a little bit later in the application here. Anyhow, back to the bedrooms and such. So during the previous variance request, you said numerous times that you would keep the basement unfinished. And so what are your plans currently for the basement? I saw it during lot views, there's just framed in rooms.
Yeah, the basement doors are gonna stay locked until hut, until Eagle Bay figures out what they're doing with their septic system.
And does Eagle Bay have a plan yet for their septic system, to your knowledge?
I don't believe so. We got water usage, um, measurements last year. I think that will be the start. But in the short term, uh, for, especially for this rental season, the basement just stays locked.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about the bedroom usage or anything at this time before I move forward? Tim, no questions? We're good?
The understanding is that until the septic system for the Eagle Bay Lodge system is fixed up to accommodate it, those bedrooms cannot be used.
Correct.
Or even constructed probably, I don't know.
Correct. That is my interpretation as well. Okay, as the application states and the applicant mentioned, that we are addressing the four foot, four inch deep by twenty-four feet wide. I can see, um, where the, I can see what you've done, taking away from the proposed porch and adding it to the cabin. However, that is still, and as we've, as you know now, that that is an enlargement to the living quarters. So that's why we're here again because even though the footprint is very similar, hasn't changed a whole lot because your first, your variance application, the cabin was thirty-six feet, the porch was presented as thirteen eight and the open deck was twelve. That includes, that ended up being sixty-one eight. Your as-built shows forty-foot cabin, four inches, the nine and, nine foot, five inch porch and the eleven foot deck, which comes to sixty-one two. Very similar in footprint, in my opinion, although he increased the living quarters by making those adjustments, which should have been amended or approved. So backing, just going to that.
I will also say I regret that because I would have much rather had a fourteen foot screen porch because that's where everybody spends their time in the summer. I wish we'd have just kept with the original print. But that's a hindsight, looking back, it was my mistake. And there again, that came because with the Eagle Bay recommendation of a four on ten pitch roof, we would not have been able to have those windows up in the bedroom. So after this variance process started, um, the variance was approved in November of twenty twenty-two. By March of twenty twenty-three, uh, the, in discussions with the contractor and the architect, we decided to go ahead and lengthen the body so that we had maintained that pitch on the roof for snow load and, um, snow control. And I was assured by both parties that as long as we stayed within our land use permit, the twenty-four by fifty, that everything would be okay. So I just, I plead ignorant. I did not know that Hubbard County was different than some of the other places I've lived.
Yes, okay.
This is Ken. Why didn't you change the slope of the, uh, pitch, uh, the shed roof on the porch? It's not heated, uh, and you could, uh, you could make it a two-ten or whatever.
That's what, it, you know, that's.
It's a four-ten now, right?
Right, except somewhere in the Eagle Bay documentation, they prefer a four on ten pitch roof.
But you could have, instead of extending everything, you could have made that slope less and still be satisfactory.
I could have.
Yes.
And then I feel like I would have not been in compliance with Eagle Bay's guidelines. So I was trying to appease Eagle Bay by maintaining the four on ten.
I don't quite understand that. What does Eagle Bay have to do with the slope on that roof?
They have building codes and recommendations so that all the cabins maintain a similar look or similar attribute because it's a rental resort.
Did you ask and they denied you making the slope less?
No, they just, they have guidelines that they want you to go by, color and.
I'm questioning your logic on the change. It was convenient. And, and I'm especially unhappy with the fact that you added all that extra living space underneath the porch, which had nothing to do with changing the, changing the slope.
And that's where I'm very confused because that was the, that was the idea from game one, from day one.
It was not, it was not in your variance. It was not in the permit. And the drawing, and the drawings show posts under that porch. Okay? It may have been in your head, but it was not in the documentation that we signed off on, on your variance.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, this is Veronica speaking. And again, speaking for myself, when I reviewed your variance application thirty-six V twenty-two with the progressive plan design in your application, we do have that photo available if you'd like to look at it because it was with your prior variance application. And looking at, can you pull that up for me, Eric? It's this first one in the application in the supplemental documents.
It shows posts.
It does, yeah. So this is the applica, this is the drawing that you submitted with your application. And again, this is speaking for myself. It clearly shows an open air concept on all three sides of the porch with the railing system that goes on the porch and across to the deck. That is how I envisioned the, the current, the cabin to be. It does appear that you would have lake or posts down for the underside of that deck and not a cement wall. However, I understand the need for the cinder block wall for retaining purposes, so I, I understand that. But you have built sidewalls on the cabin currently with your other blueprints instead of the open air area. And again, I know that you reduced that side and you added it to the cabin. And I understand those changes made, however, they were, um, not approved by the Environmental Services. But anyhow, so it shows the open air concept on all three sides along with the railing. And during our lot views back then, you also referenced the neighboring cabins on multiple aspects, the screened short porch being one of them, because I remember sitting at the front and you pointed over to the property beside us that had the open air screened porch. When we visited about the screened porch, it should have just been open and screened. So when I envision a screened porch, I don't see sidewalls like you have constructed. I don't know if any of my other members are concerned about the screened porch, but that's just clearly something that I just wanted to say that how I envisioned your picture here that you had with your application. And again, as Ken mentioned, with the post downstairs and you did cinder blocks instead. We also discussed utilizing the existing structure stairway from that screened porch deck, which prompted that condition that we had because currently your cabin and the cabin next door utilize that walkway to the lake, correct? They both do. And so we, that was why that condition was placed on there. So, um, since you added the extra living space to the cabin and the retaining, and I, so I proposed to retain that expansion that after expect, the after the fact expansion of the four by four by twenty-four, my proposal would be to remove the sidewalls of the screened porch, utilizing the railing and posts and screens as presented in the variance application. That is just one proposal that I have at this time. Does anybody have any comments or questions about the screened in porch area where the applicant removed the four foot, the four feet, four inches, reducing the porch and enclosing the sides? If not, we can move forward.
I guess I'm confused then on what a twenty-four by fifty foot land use permit is. Because if we're gonna do that, then we're gonna say that the screened porch is not part of the land use permit. It becomes nothing more than a deck. So I thought the whole reason the fifty foot length was there was because of the screened porch and the area below it. That's the twenty-four by fifty.
Your cabin itself was the livable space and the porch is not included in that livable space, correct, Eric?
The porch is still considered part of the structure.
Right, but the, but since he reduced the porch and added the enclosed living quarters or living, livable space to the cabin, that's where he's created this need.
That's the four foot area under discussion.
Correct.
And we made sure that we didn't add any bathrooms or bedrooms or, I guess, say, looking back, I wish we'd have just gone with the original intent. Right now, it's hard to get a picnic table out there and walk around both sides, so I would have much rather had a fourteen foot deep screened porch. But we don't. But I thought the fifty foot long land use permit allowed us to do what we've done with that screened porch.
Well, I understand, like I mentioned, I understand on your, looking again at your prior variance application with the walkout basement, I could see by one photo only where you had the patio created. But it wasn't enclosed. But again, I understand the need for the cinder blocks instead of the posts, why it was enclosed. However, completely enclosing it and are you have, did you have plans to put another doorway system prior to that on this cement slab?
No, we were, I was just trying to make it look good and frankly, the cement was poured. Because the pumper truck that came that day had extra cement and I was not there and the contractor said, yeah, just go ahead and pour the concrete. And there's a one inch puddle down there, so I'm okay with removing that concrete and taking the concrete pad out of there. But removing the ICF walls, I mean, that's structural part of the building. That is a major, major undertaking. And there again, I thought with the fifty foot, twenty-four by fifty foot land use permit, that it didn't.
Well, again, I think you could see where we're coming from here, just looking at this picture here. Envisioning the posts and not having a cinder block wall and a cinder black and a concrete patio is where there was some gray area. During lot views also, you referenced, again, neighboring projects having, you know, showing us posts and decks and wasn't with the cinder blocks. However, though, I, I understand the need for those structure, for those, that, how that's an integrity part of the structure. To me, removing it is really not in the question. It does fully fit underneath the, the deck that's above it. I would propose. I would propose conditions, again, placed on it. That thirteen-foot, six-inch by eleven walkout, lakeside walkout basement patio must remain open and never enclosed would be a condition that I would impose.
Yeah.
Also, again, I wanted to get back to our, our walkway and connecting to the existing. I did not see any type of walkway from that walkout basement area. I was envisioning grass, just grass to come all the way up to the concrete since you had the walkway from the deck going down, connecting to that existing walkway. I would suggest just the natural vegetation must be planted and maintained. No additional walkway allowed.
That is no problem. And since you were there, we started, um, Four Seasons locally is doing the landscape work up top. And this is gonna be an ADA accessible cabin. So we've got a ramp going down the side of the building, but we have figured out just today what we're doing up top. So coming off of that screened porch will be an ADA accessible ramp. And then it will go over and tie into the stairwell that you saw that will go, and that will tee off and go to both cabins. So both cabins will be accessing that stairwell as you have requested.
Are you, are you into looking for conditions on the premise that this is so far along, it would be impractical to make them tear down? Are you looking for conditions that'll offset that? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, Ken, that is what I'm doing because he clearly meets all the setbacks um, of the Shoreland Management Ordinance. However, like I mentioned, I can see where the, the applicant had made mistakes by reducing the porch area and enlarging the cabin area and using cinder blocks and, and for the, and the concrete patio. Yet he still falls within that same footprint entirely. I mean, of all the cabins, the decks and the patios still fall within the same numbers as the first thirty-six V twenty-two application. Still meets all the setbacks. Unfortunately, there were things to me have been constructed that I would like to see have some changes. I don't foresee, I don't see the need to have the applicant remove um, some of the items as it's a control integrity. I'm definitely open to asking the, visiting about the after the fact add-on questions. I think the applicant has already mentioned that he just failed to visit with Environmental Services Office because he was under the wrong impression of what his land use permit actually was used for. You do know now that any, any type of enlargement cannot be made without a variance, correct?
Very much. And it, it's confusing. I, I wish that there was better instructions in some of Hubbard County's work. For example, I'm from Rochester, Minnesota, and down there, you have to sheet rock all the ceilings in a basement to meet fire code. Up here, you have to sheet rock the walls and not the ceiling. So I fully appreciate that things change county to county. But like I say, I was insured by two professionals that, no, you could have three stories of twenty-four by fifty feet. And yeah, I know now and I will not be building another cabin up here.
Well, for future, I would definitely always consult with Environmental Services before making any changes and see what you're allowed and not allowed.
There again, I was thinking that these pictures were like preliminary, just so you have the idea that we have a two-story walkout basement. These were never designed to be the full-blown architectural prints. I, I wish that I would have brought architectural prints in and provided them.
Yes, well, and when we are reviewing your applications and when we make a motion to approve the application, it is as submitted per the site plan, per all the numbers, per the distances, setback requirements. That is, and height, that's why we request all of that information from you. So that when we make a motion to approve, deny, or table the application, all the information is provided for us so that we know what we are approving or what we are denying.
At this point, all I can do is say I'm sorry. It was not intentional to pull the wool over anybody's eyes or do anything negative.
Veronica, uh, if, if you're looking for some thoughts on how we can mitigate a compromise and allow this, I have a couple of thoughts. One is that, that um, offset what was allowed is that the base, that the basement cannot continue any construction beyond the current studs that are there. And I'd like to see pictures of it um, as record, whether the ESO takes them or the applicant. And they're on file such that any inspection would confirm that there's no septic plumbing in there and the, and the bedroom structures are not anywhere beyond what's there. And I think secondly, I'd like to say that I think the five-bedroom thing should be reduced to four because that additional fourteen feet of expansion in the basement enables that fifth bedroom. And that clearly should not have been there. And so I would like to um, add those two possibilities. I don't have a problem with the concrete pad uh, in that walkout area as long as uh, there's a condition that no, it cannot be enclosed. It has to stay just as it is. Those are my thoughts on input.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Anybody else have any comments or input or?
I agree with Ken.
I guess I just want to ask, when you said no improvements, are you saying ever? Are you saying until Eagle Bay gets their septic system up to speed with the bedroom in the basement?
Yeah.
The bedrooms in the basement fit under the original requirement that they, you cannot add additional bedrooms beyond the three above until the septic system is upgraded.
Okay, but you just said you wanted pictures that the basement wasn't finished.
Correct.
Yeah, that you can't do any more construction in that basement at all.
Okay.
As it is. And in the future, only one bedroom down there, not two.
So how do I handle future construction? Do I have to go through another variance process or? When Eagle, when Eagle Bay?
Have to go to, I believe you would have to go to Environmental Services to document the fact that the septic system has been upgraded in Eagle Bay Lodge, uh, condominium area or whatever you call it, rezervdominium, that that's in, has been approved. I don't know. Eric would have to say whether he has to do any more authorization beyond that, uh, except that the restriction would be only one more bedroom down there, not two. I realize you gotta do a grinder, lift pump and everything for those, for that.
That's fine. I'm just, respectfully, I'm just confused when you say you want pictures so that there's no work done in the basement. And I'm asking.
Yep.
Is, if that's a forever thing?
Yeah.
Or if that's uh, just until Eagle Bay?
Until the Eagle Bay septic system is completed, upgraded.
Okay, so once Eagle Bay completes their septic system, then we can put a bathroom down there and a bedroom, only one, not two.
Yeah, we assume data. I think you have to approve that. I don't know. Would you have to?
Septic system's already installed.
Yeah, I'm.
Okay.
Not to accommodate your basement.
It's, a five-bedroom septic system is installed, as was granted on the original variance, so that we didn't have to dig all that stuff up and redo it later. So the five-bedroom septic system's already in place, but the upstairs, just gravity drains into it.
Holding tanks for it, but you still have to lift up out of those tanks into the.
Right.
Yeah, okay. That I understand.
Okay.
There's no bathroom in the basement right now.
Basically, what, Ken, just so that you're clear, Ken is just stating that the basement is to remain unfinished. This is a possible condition. It's not been a motion yet or anything. But a possible condition would be the basement is to remain unfinished. Pre and post visits from the Environmental Services, Environmental Service Office to verify the compliance of this condition number three of the thirty-six V twenty-two, that you still only have three bedrooms at this time. So then if the septic system is enlarged before that you can finish that, once the septic system is completed at Eagle Bay Resort, then you can go to the Environmental's Office, inform them, which they will already know once, because they have to put, get a permit for the septic system to be enlarged, correct?
No.
Eric, the Eagle Bay for the drain field.
With the septic system.
Let me grab my water bottle.
What Mr. Scott installed was tanks to service his cabin that are sized for five bedrooms. The issue with the overall system is all those cabins share the same drain field. There's some tanks further downstream before you reach the drain field, some stowing tanks that are undersized and the drain field is at capacity.
Yeah.
They could provide us with actual metered data that could potentially show the water usage to be lower than the design flow, in which case they would then have margin. But absent that data, we have to go off of the design flow numbers and the septic rules. And that's currently the issue.
I, I'm in agreement with Ken. I don't so much um, see the miss, the need to reduce him from the number of bedrooms. I would still keep it at max at five. I, you know, two downstairs, however he has it planned. I don't see the need to reduce it because that is what we originally planned. However, I would leave that open to, for discussion. Again, I just had the concerns with the enclosure on the screened-in porch. And then I had, I agree with Ken on the lakeside patio. Walkout basement must remain open and never enclosed. And no walkway allowed from the walkout basement. Natural vegetation must be planted and maintained. No additional walkway allowed.
I would like to clarify one thing on the screened porch, storm windows, it's not ever gonna be heated. It's never gonna be a four-season. There's, it's always gonna be a screened porch. But in the off-season winter months, I want to be able to be able to put storm windows up there just to keep debris and stuff out of it. But we will never use it as a heated living space.
So currently, at a lot views, did not have any windows.
Right, it's just gonna have screens. The screen frames weren't in yet, but that's gonna be screens in those window, in those square areas. And in the winter time, I'm gonna have removable storm windows that just sit there during the snow season. And then in the spring, we take them off.
I don't have a problem with that. Do we have any other questions or comments?
This is Mike. I guess I'd have a comment on. This is not the first time, Mr. Scott, that you've gotten a variance. You've got, this is your second variance that you've gotten from the county for your properties.
It is.
And uh, so this is your third time before this board because now it's after the fact. I want to just state for the record that every building permit issued states, no changes to this permit are allowed unless a permit amendment is requested and approved. So the reason we're here, and I'm not gonna get into the details and I don't really wanna hear who made what mistakes or who did what unauthorized. The ultimate responsibility is of the landowner to comply with the building permit. And the reason we're here is because it was not complied with.
I appreciate that. I also know that the changes were made in June of two thousand and twenty-two to the Hubbard County. Worded it such that any changes to the land use design, and I got confused on what the word land use design means. You really don't use building permits up here like I'm familiar with. And I asked my contractor, did you apply for a building permit? And he says, no. So elsewhere I've been, you have building permits different from here, but my bad. I just.
And again, I'm not interested in why or wherefore, but ultimately, it's your responsibility. And in this day and age, with communications, the way it is, a phone call, an email, all kinds of things to address these issues, so this board does not have to do with the after the fact.
Sorry, I read that though, and it said as long as there's no.
Again, I'm not concerned.
Okay, let's move forward. Okay, so you understand the possible conditions if we were to approve this after the fact variance application to keep things, to retain these items. One of the possible conditions would be the basement is to remain unfinished. Pre and post visit from the Environmental Services Office to verify the compliance of the condition number three, thirty-six V twenty-two, when the septic, that, you know, you cannot have the additional bedrooms. It must remain unfinished until the septic is enlarged before you can finish and complete bedrooms number four and bedrooms number five. Do you understand that, that condition? Perfect. Anybody have any questions on that?
I like make a comment that Eric had mentioned that if, if meter information came along, that would satisfy it.
Okay, so we wanna put on there then on the condition, the basement is to remain unfinished. Pre and post visits from ESO to verify the compliance. When the septic is either enlarged or metered data.
Metered fact information, the factual information. And it, and uh, it would allow for that capacity. Potential gallons per day increase.
This is Mike. Do we really need to, don't we just need to say approved by Environmental Services? Because whether they enlarge it or meter it and then ask for an exception, it still has to go through Environmental Services for permitting, correct?
Well, review permit would only be required if they didn't get the meter data and had to go off a design flow, which would require the drain field to be enlarged.
So we need the data, okay.
Okay.
Okay, I have that on there. Or metered factual information would allow.
Gallon per day increase.
Gallon per day increase, okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Are we preserving the conditions from the original variance with regards to gutters and uh, and the walkway, right?
Those still have to, those are still in effect.
Those will be in the new.
Those are still the same. They do not change.
Yeah, okay. We don't have to add them in this case.
No, sir.
Okay.
No. Do you have any, does any other, do any of the other members have any questions about the porch? Leave it as is, remove the sidewalls. What are your feelings?
You're talking about that lower level.
I'm talking about this midsection here. So at this picture is what was presented in the variance application thirty-six V twenty-two. The current structure drawn, can you show the current one, please, Eric?
Drawings or photos?
This, this picture of the current. It looks very similar, but yet different.
So we're okay, are we okay with the screened-in porch being?
Being enclosed instead of open air, or do we have the applicant remove the sidewalls that he has created? Actually, there's a different.
Some of the screened-in porch had walls and screens.
Walls and screens, but not the current walls. So here, if you go back up just a second, Eric, right there, the screened-in porch is completely walled, right there.
Oh.
And a window. And only the front is open. Same with the other side.
Oh, I assumed they were gonna cut that out and put windows in it, no?
There is a window already installed on, on this, it appears. I can't quite.
If I looked at it, this is too much. If I looked at it, if I would have been in favor of it when it first came around, I would have been.
Say that again.
I, if, if it would have come before me at the last variance, I would have been in favor of that.
That as well?
The way it is right now.
Screened-in porch.
You're okay with it?
I don't have a problem with the way it is.
So just leave it like it is.
Like, leave it like it is.
Okay, perfect. Same with everyone else, okay. All right, then. Number two then would be the thirteen-foot, six-inch by eleven-inch lakeside walkout basement patio must remain open and never enclosed. You're okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then number four, like I mentioned already, the no. no walkway allowed from the walkout basement. Natural vegetation must be planted and maintained and no additional walkway allowed.
I'm sorry, you lost me. I thought you went from number two to number four.
I'm sorry, number two to number three. Re- renumbered.
Okay, and what's that one read?
Um no walkway allowed from the walkout basement. Natural vegetation must be planted and maintained.
That's absolutely.
Just be grass all the way up to your concrete patio. That we don't have to go and try to figure out how to tie in stairs and stuff up the side there. Yes, no, maybe. Anybody else have comments or questions or delete or?
This is Larry. What are your plans for the top of that concrete porch? Is that going to be a seating area at all, or what's happening with that?
Underneath?
No, up on top.
On the open air deck?
Yes.
Yes, it's going to have a um a railing on it to meet code and there'll probably be a patio table up there or something.
Okay.
So that that is the open air deck.
Yeah.
And it exits through the porch and through the other porch door to get to the stairs and the wheelchair accessible ramp.
Okay.
It's open on top all the way around. It's just it's just going to have railings basically, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm prepared to make a motion if we're ready.
Okay.
Everybody ready? Okay, I make a motion to approve the after the facts variance application with the following conditions already mentioned. Number one, the basement is to remain unfinished. Pre and post visit from the Environmental Services, Environmental Service Offices to verify the compliance of the condition number three of thirty-six V dash twenty-two. And when the septic is enlarged or metered factual information would allow the GPS G P D increase before you can finish and complete bedrooms four and five. The next one would be condition that the thirteen foot six by eleven lakeside walkout basement patio must remain open and never enclosed. And the last condition, no walkway allowed from the walkout basement. Natural vegetation must be planted and maintained. And I have findings of facts. Number one. Is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls. The current structure complies with all setbacks, structure height and elevation. The number of bedrooms will not increase from three to five as a condition being placed on the after the fact variance that the basement remains unfinished until the subject is enlarged or metered per the condition. ESO will verify that the basement is unfinished and that condition number three of thirty-six V twenty-two has been met. Is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the official control? Yes. Livable space in the cabin has increased. However, the structure complies with all setbacks. Screen porches and walkout photos are all reasonable use or walkout patios are all reasonable use and conditions have been placed on the walkout patio basement to never be enclosed. Number three is the need for the variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current and prior property owners. The applicant maintained the overall footprint of the cabin, including the porch deck and platform from variance thirty-six dash V dash twenty-two site plan. However, the structure is part of a nonconforming use and expanded the livable space, which the ordinance prohibits expansion of a structure devoted to nonconforming use unless the variance from this provision is granted. Number four, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of locality? Yes, the area is a mix of single story and two-story structures with screen porches and lakeside decks. The cabin will not harm the setbacks or sight lines of the lakes surrounding the dwellings. And number five, does the stated practical difficulty involve more than just the economic considerations? And yet I will adopt the staff's findings for number five. I made a motion with conditions and findings of facts. Do I have anybody for a second?
This is Larry. I second.
Okay, I made a motion for the application to approve with the with the conditions and the findings of facts. Larry seconded. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I'll vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. After the fact variance has been approved, you still will need, you'll be getting a a letter from Environmental Services stating what you need to do next and what permits need to be purchased. If you ever have any questions, please contact Environmental Services.
Right. In the process of all this, the land use permit expired. Do I need to immediately renew another one tomorrow? Construction's pretty complete.
You'll have to amend the permit since the structure that was built didn't agree with what was permitted.
So I come in tomorrow and get a different permit then?
If you can wait two days, that would be appreciated so we can make sure my staff gets made aware of the outcome of the decision this evening.
He'll have to purchase a new one, right?
And that can be done through the mail? All right. And um does wording need to be put in there about off-season storm window allowance on the screen porch? Are we comfortable? Can that just be a thing? This is on recorded video.
This is Veronica speaking. I don't have any objections to the off-season boarding up the windows.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Variants application fifteen dash V dash twenty-four by Sweeney Family Trust. Lot fourteen. Is it Rohan Estates, section thirty-three, township one forty, range thirty-four, Henrietta Township on Long Lake. A recreational development lake parcel thirteen point five zero point zero one three zero zero. The applicant is requesting a variance from section five oh six of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for proposed guest cottage to be located on a lot that does not meet the required one hundred and fifty foot minimum lot width and forty thousand square foot minimum lot area requirements. We have the applicants available and if so, please come to the presenter's table. Thank you very much. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Sweeney. And this is my wife, Rogean Sweeney. And we reside at sixteen two thirty-five Dakota Shores Drive.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Can you go ahead and go forward? Proceed with your request.
We have a simple request. We just want to add two sets of bunk beds in an existing structure. And that causes the guest cottage regulations to require two variances. Our lot area is seven hundred square feet less than forty thousand square feet required. That's ninety-eight point two percent of the required area. Our lot width is a hundred and four feet or a hundred and two feet. And the cottage regulations require a hundred and fifty feet. So we're considerably less in width. However, our lot is a hundred and I don't know, four, a hundred and seven feet longer than the required lot. So if you took that and put it off to the side, which we can't do because we have neighbors. But if you did that, then we would be at ninety-eight percent of the hundred and fifty foot width requirement. So our lots, you know, deeper from the road to the lake than the standard forty thousand square foot lot that's a hundred and fifty foot wide. So we're really close there too, or ninety-eight percent. That's that's a pretty good grade. When I went to school fifty years ago or sixty years ago, ninety-eight percent is is passing at least. The the other points that we would make is that uh we're we're just asking for a bunk house. We're asking for, you know, we're not asking for a guest cottage. And we we would entertain any conditions that you may set as a board. And we voluntarily listed some of the conditions. No building addition to the existing accessory structure. The existing structure is three hundred square feet less than the half the gotti cottage requirements, which is seven hundred square feet. No kitchen, no kitchen sink, no dishwasher, no garbage disposal, no cooking stove area. And it's intended for seasonal use. It's a bunk house that we would like to have our grandkids come to and bring friends because they're getting older and they don't like to be around us two old people as well as they did when they were younger. That's our intentions. We went through and listed the the five conditions for compliance. You can read them or I can go through them with you. I'd be open to any questions. Like most of you saw it.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. No need to review those. We've all probably had a chance to read them, but thank you very much. Again, I just want to for the record, the request is to have a guest cottage co-located within an existing detached garage on a lot that is roughly one hundred feet wide. One hundred and fifty feet is the minimum required lot width and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-three square feet per the G I S tax parcel layer and forty thousand square feet is the minimum required lot width. The guest cottage space itself would comply with the square footage and height provision and meets the required setback.
Additionally, we have letters of support from our two neighbors, Johnson to the north and and Bill and Mike Cowman to the south and Xena. I believe those are of record.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Sweeney. We did receive some written comments and they have been provided. Also wanted to announce for the record, the department learned in January twenty-four that the garage was built on top of part of the drain field that services the house. Notice a notice of violation letter was sent to the landowner concerning this violation. A new septic permit was issued on January thirtieth to install the new pressure bed. Do you have a date yet when this is to be installed? I know you have a deadline of July first.
I I talked to the uh to the guy that's going to install it today and he said he's probably going to start Thursday.
And we did discuss during lot views that um it is oversized, currently sized for four bedrooms, but oversized to accommodate more. So if this does move forward, it appears you would have.
It was submitted for a six bedroom and if there ever is going to be addition to anything, you know, we're going to build it to a six bedroom. And we'll get that changed, I believe.
Do I have any questions from the members?
Yeah, this is this is Ken. The garage was built, I assume, by permit in twenty twenty. When did you construct that basic uh guest area? When you built the garage or did you add it on or finish it off afterwards?
It was uh all under land use permit and was all built at one time. And when we discovered that it was being built over the drain field, then uh Gertz, who had put in the original sewage system, came out and he applied for I think a month later, a four-bedroom sewer permit to extend the existing sewers so that they would be in compliance.
Did the original permit to build the garage include that bump out for that uh area?
Yes.
You said it was built by, is that, is that?
It did.
Validated? That that little bump out was allowed in the building permit originally?
The the whole thing was built at once and.
No, I'm I'm talking about the permit that you got to build that garage.
Yes.
What, do we have a, I don't remember seeing a copy of the original.
I think that that it's in there. There's at least sketches of it.
So a land use permit was submitted in our application for the uh the garage. It was in July twenty-second of twenty twenty. And it states in there in the comments that the garage will have septic, but no living quarters allowed. And there was a septic compliance inspection on file.
Okay.
I I think that uh on the application pages nine and ten show what was originally intended.
Okay.
But the building was built basically the same as applied for.
So I guess what my what my colleague is trying to say is when you built the garage, what were your intentions for that room? You always wanted it to be a bunk house? You made it for a bunk?
No, I just, uh, when we were finishing it. That's why we had applied for the four-bedroom sewer design. When we were finishing it on the inside and that, we were talking about it and we decided then that we'd like to have bunk house so that the kids can bring their grandkids or the grandkids can bring friends. That's when it was decided was in between construction and finishing. Well, it's not finished now, you know, there's there's some finished work to be done on the inside of it.
Yes. This is Veronica speaking. At what time did you, do you have like a date or approximately when you turned it into the bunk house? I mean, like you said shortly after you built it and then you decided to turn it into the bunk house?
You know, I've I've been working finishing the inside, you know, since the shell was constructed.
Well, does anybody have any comments? Otherwise, I'm going to open for public comment.
No.
Okay, this time I'll open for public comment. And it appears no public comments, so I will close public comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mike.
This is Mike. Um we've as a board, I think typically tried to stick really closely to the ordinance as far as guest cabins. And while I appreciate the fact that it's real close on square footage, it is only two-thirds of the required width. And based on that, I can't support the application.
Thank you, Mike. Do I have any?
Support the application in the fact that we could add a bedroom to the house? And this is adding a bed, an existing bedroom. It results in the same. It results in the same.
Um if you're asking me, per my personal opinion is is I would prefer everything be done by permit rather than coming to variance. So if it can be done by permit on the house, that is certainly an option. Uh but based on what's in front of me and what's being asked for a guest cottage on a lot that it does not meet the requirements, I can't support.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other comments or questions for the applicant?
Uh, this is Tim. I um I agree with Mike because you're not always going to be the owner and I could see uh two different people using that and be total strangers on that lake lot. That's why we have the rules for this, so. That's why we have the rules for this, so I agree with Mike.
Okay, this is Veronica. Just for my input, in July 22nd of 2020, a land use permit was issued for the garage. It specifically noted on the permit that no living quarters were allowed. Did you go into the office to do the application?
Yes.
I worked in the ESO for a year and a half. So and one of the very first questions that we determine if the land use permit can be issued or not is if it will have living quarters. And I'm pretty much.
The permit said, the permit said no living quarters.
Correct, so that tells me that the person that took the application asked you if there was going to be living quarters and your answer was no. So they put on the comments, no living quarters because you had septic information on there. If your answer had been yes, then the next step would have been to determine if it meets the lot size requirements or septic requirements. So I, I'm, I'm grants with my other two colleagues that I am not in favor of approving this request because you initially went in for it and you knew that no living quarters were allowed, yet you still had maintained and placed living quarters in there. Living quarters or additions can be made by permit to the house. So I am opposed of the application. Anybody have any other comments or ready to make a motion?
This is Mike, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
I make the motion that we deny the application and accept the staff's findings of fact.
This is Tim, I'll second the motion.
Mike made a motion to deny the application as presented and accept the staff's findings of fact. Tim seconded the motion. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye and the application has been denied. You will receive a decision letter from the Environmental Services Office.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Variance application 16-B-24 by John Fitzloff. Lot 2, block 1, G7, section 20, township 141, range 34, Lake Emma Township on Blue Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 16.92.00200. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 902.4 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to remove a portion of a permanent ice ridge. If we have the applicant available, please come to the, oh, you're already there, sorry. Didn't look up. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name's John Fitzloff. I live at 17150 County 40, Park Rapids.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzloff. Can you go ahead and proceed with your request?
Yes, what I'm requesting is to knock the ice ridge down approximately 47 feet of it. That's the direct area that my family uses. It's currently about three and a half feet tall at the highest point. So what I would like to do is, it's about two and a half feet average in width. I would like to knock that down to where the grade appears to originally be about one foot above water level. It's currently, it's very dangerous getting up and down that, that ice ridge. It's very hard and dangerous taking docks and boat lifts and things of that nature in and out. And I'm also requesting, you guys were there, there's about a five, six foot wide trail, road, whatever you want to call it, that I put in so I could drive a four wheeler or snowmobile down to the lake. I would like to do the same thing in about a five foot area straight in line with that road. So I'm able to go down that road right out onto the ice and vice versa, back up. And that's about it. I'm just trying to improve the safety and the usable, that small usable area for my family to use the lake.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Question?
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah. That five foot cut, that's always already been approved?
No, the access path that you walked down.
I'm sorry.
The access path that you walked down to view the site during the lot view, that was what was permitted. That's what he was referring to.
The path is, but not the cut for the five foot?
Correct. The five foot ice ridge cut is part of this request along with the 46 foot.
That 47 foot also includes the, you know, the three to one reduction on the sides. So down to where it'll be one foot will actually be shorter than 47 feet.
Does anybody have any questions at this time? Otherwise I'm going to open for public comment. Okay, I'm going to open for public comment. Seeing there's no public comment, I will close it for the record. During lot views, this is Veronica speaking, I observed the neighboring properties as well, wanted to see how they handled the ice ridge and how they accessed the lake. Neither of them had a 46 foot ice ridge removal. Most, both properties just utilized their docking system and attached it directly to the land and used it as a ramp from what I could tell. They didn't need to have the removal that you're wanting. Didn't seem, seems like that across the entire area was about the same in my opinion. Would you, I, I think 46, 47 plus the five is a bit on the excessive side. Generally, historically, we have not granted ice ridge removals to that capacity. Generally, they've been around 10 foot with three to one slope. Have you considered reducing your request?
I would like to keep it the way it is. Bringing, that would require you to bring a boat lift up that 10 foot and then shift it over 40 feet, which is difficult to do. And my neighbors have it professionally done, I do not. And I'm retired and, you know, it's, I don't make the money I used to, so I would rather continue to not do that. And the reality is, is that ice ridge is being undercut by the lake and it's eroding away. Everything there is tipping into the lake. I've already had to cut dead trees that were in the water coming up, had to cut them out of there. And like we were talking about, I need to do something with those pine trees because they're about ready to fall in the water. So that ice ridge, although it seems very large and a solid piece of land, it's not. It's undercut foot, foot and a half all along there. So by removing that area, it also prevents future erosion into the lake.
This is Mike. I can't support this application for the amount of footage there. And when I look at that ice ridge and others that we've looked at where we've imposed that 10 foot cut with three to one slopes, and that's all I would be able to support for this application.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments from any other members?
This is Ken, I, I will agree with that, but I do think the, the five foot one might also be worth allowing because in the wintertime, he's going to have all of his dock and lift stacked up along the other side and won't be able to access a 10 foot one. So I, I would, I would think allowing that five foot one for a snowmobile or a quad in wintertime is reasonable. But I agree with the 10 foot. We've typically done that 10 foot, three to one slope, down to about a foot above the water level. Makes sense.
This is Tim and I agree with you, except for generally, we're not so generous when it's at the base of a hill. We're generally that generous when it's flat.
Yeah, okay.
But we have the, the hillside pouring into the lake after a winter of snow.
And currently with the ice ridge, it kind of prevents it a little bit and removing all of that, it would just dump into there.
And this is Mike, I, I can't support the second one.
Can't support what?
The five foot one, just the single 10 foot with three to one sides.
What that does, if I don't have the five foot, it forces me to build a ramp there. And when you're going up and down there, it's going to, you know, once you tear that up, it's going to erode. There's not much a guy can do to prevent it. It would be much better if, if that was cut down, whole lot safer as well.
Have you considered moving your dock system to where you're proposing the five foot and just put one 10 foot cut there and that's where your docks are? Move your docks out of the pathway and then you have your winter access? This is, this is a matter of, to me, it looks like convenience, not what's best according to our ordinance.
Well, the thing is, if I did that, you can see that shoreline, I would have to clear a lot of trees down there. And from what I understand, I can't cut any trees down unless they're dead or a danger.
And again, looking at this, even though you've identified those ribbons as where you want it, that can be moved. You know, where you put that 10 foot, there's, there's multiple choices there that in my mind would be sufficient.
And the reason I chose that is if I, if I go to the north, which is towards those pine trees, I'm going to be cutting those roots and destabilizing those pine trees which are already undercut by the lake. You can't, you can almost see it there, but if you went down there, you could put your arm up to here underneath it, those trees. If I cut more of those roots out of there, I'm afraid those things are going to topple right into the lake. And then we'll lose the trees and have one heck of a mess trying to get them out of there. That's why I chose that five foot section to be in quite a ways over. And if I'm just driving a snowmobile up and down the hill, there's just a little bit of brush I've got to get out of there.
Any other comments? Just wanted to put some information out there. The intent of the ordinance is to protect the shoreline and the lake from erosion and sedimentation, existing, which the existing ice ridge is doing. Removing 51 feet of the ice ridge would create a large area that would be susceptible to erosion in excessive in width for the ice ridge removal that would be needed to provide safe access point. As Tim already said, if we move 47 feet, then we're just making a spot for the snow runoff, you know, when the snow melts, that's just going to run off right into the lake. There's not going to have anywhere to, to stop it. I agree with Mike. I think the request for the five foot section and the other larger ice ridge section are excessive and more of a want and not necessarily a need. There are other ways you can utilize your snowmobile access than, than your property right there. I mean, you can, like you said, you can apply for something with a more modest reduction as I asked earlier, but you declined to reduce your numbers?
If I have to, I will. I mean, I would rather have you reduce it here now than go through the application process again. All that's going to do is take all of our time.
Because I am in a grants that I am not supportive of this request, but I would be open to a much smaller 10 foot or less cut.
I'm not in favor of anything from that picture right there. Any cuts from them pines over, it'd have to be over by the dock and eight or 10 feet, something like that.
So I'm, I'm reading from my colleagues, you'd be agreeable to a 10 foot cut, three one slope on the side where he was proposing the 46 feet and not, and not allowing the five foot. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
It appears so, yes.
This is Larry. Is there a room if you get a 10 foot cut to get your docks and stuff there and still be able to slide by it with your four wheeler or whatever?
No, not, not really. In the summertime, you can come down with a four wheeler and turn. In the wintertime, if you tried to get up there, you're making a 90 degree this way, which you might be able to do. But now you're at the base of that road trying to make a 90 at the bottom of that hill and go up, you're going to get stuck and you're going to tear it all up. That's why I wanted it kind of straight in line with that road. So you get a straight shot up that, up that road.
And this is Veronica speaking, just speaking for myself, it is not our responsibility to make sure that the applicants have room for docking systems. Those systems can be removed by professionals and hauled off offsite if needed. So really the docking systems placement afterwards is not really my concern. My concern is the ice ridge cut and if he wants to have access, then he will relocate his docking system in the wintertime.
It's a very big hardship to move all those docks and boat lifts. Very large expense. The 10 foot thing I, I could make work. It's not ideal, but I would request hopefully that you would allow it back over by the dock to keep me away from those pines and I really don't want to cut those trees down. I like the blockage between our lot and the neighbors and if I had to cut a bunch of stuff down there, even if I was allowed to do it, that blockage is gone. And that's not something I really want to do. I'm sure that's not something my neighbors really want me to do either.
How, how long a dock do you have?
Right now it's 32, but it's very shallow out there. It's only a little over waist deep, so I'm going to extend that so that.
You probably maybe about four sections of dock that you'd, you would attach together. You have to take a part, carry them up and stack them is what you have to do.
Probably about five 10 footers.
What?
Probably be about five 10 footers. Cause I want to go out and I want to come over. I have four boat lifts. So I'd like to go out for the pontoon boat lift, need some water. And then I'd like to come over just 10 foot and put a boat lift on each side of that 10 foot section.
How many watercraft do you have?
Quite a few. Quite a few. I, I've lived on a lake my whole life and I, that's, I love the waters.
Small lake for a lot of watercraft.
Most of them are small.
Okay, are you prepared to, anybody prepared to make a motion?
This is Mike, I'm prepared to make a motion. I make the motion, we approve 16-V-24, but what we are approving is a 10 foot wide cut with three to one side slopes to be constructed in the area where the current docks are. And for the findings of fact, is the variance in harmony with the general purpose and intent of official controls? Yes, providing a single access to the lake through an ice ridge is reasonable and in harmony. Is the property only proposing a use, to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by official control? Again, yes, access to the lake and your docks is, is a reasonable use. Is the need for variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners? Yes, ice ridges happen naturally on many of our area lakes. Will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? Yes, it's very similar to what neighbors and other properties have done on, on the lake and accept number five for the staff's findings.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone have a second?
This is Larry, I second it.
Okay, we had a motion by Mike to approve a 10 foot wide ice ridge cut, not the five foot or 46 foot, in the location where the current dock system is with a three to one slope. And he provided findings of fact from one through four and adopted staff's findings number five. Larry, seconded the motion. Larry, seconded the motion. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry. I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye.
I'd, I'd have a question for you. What I would like to do with that ten foot is pretty much center it between where I marked the forty-seven feet. So it would actually be to the left of the dock. That's where the boat lifts will be. So to bring those boat lifts in.
So it's in the general area of the, where the docks is.
Yes, yes, and that would keep
I have a question. Is there any trees in that spot?
No, and that's the other reason. That would keep my slope farther away from the trees on each end. I don't wanna kill them.
Okay, alright. That sounds like it'll fit in that area, so.
How, how soon before I could start on this project?
Well, Environmental Services Office will be sending you a decision letter tonight with the appropriate guidelines for the next steps cause you'll have to get app, um, permit applications for that. Photo documentation, I believe, has to be before and after as well. So you will be contacting Environmental Services, at least give them two or three days so that they can review tonight's meeting and
I just wanna make sure I don't start digging and
Yes, don't start digging in yet until you get a permit.
Okay. I thank the board for their time and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, variance application seventeen dash V dash twenty-four by Michael and Deborah Sayak? Chuck, 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 there we go. Part of Government Lot One, Section thirty-five, Township one forty-one, Range thirty-four, Lake Emma Township on Big Sand Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel sixteen point thirty-five point zero zero two zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from Part One, Section five oh seven point two, the Shoreline Management Ordinance, to have a mechanical lift in addition to an existing stairway for accessing the lake through a bluff impact zone and Part Two, Section nine oh two of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for a proposed excavation in the bluff impact zone. Thank you very much. Please address, say your name and address for the record, please.
Mike and, excuse me, Mike and Deb Chuck. I haven't used my voice for a while. Mike and Deb Chuck, two two eight six nine, County Seven, Park Rapids, Minnesota.
Thank you. And you may proceed with your requests.
This past winter, we bought thirty feet of property from my neighbor so that we'd have a conforming lot size. And when the site was last, the lot reveal was last week and there, there was one issue that was, was kind of, um, left open. And Veronica, you had had some questions on that shed that was down there. And so I did some homework as best I could. And you'll have in front of you a piece of paper from Dolores Clack. Uh, Dolores Clack Real Estate Agency. It's dated, uh, six twenty-eight eighty-six. And this is the property that we bought. It, it had been for sale for, uh, three years before somebody, and before we bought it. And if you look where that star is, it, when it lists the items at the property, one of them is a small storage building at the lake. So that was as far back as I could go, um, to find any dates. I don't know if, I mean, I've always heard that, uh, planes have gone over and photographed properties around the lake. And so I don't know if there's something that would go further back. But from, what I can find out from any of my neighbors was that shed's always been there.
Thank you for gathering the information.
Well, I do my best. So I don't know how you want me to proceed. You know that there's two variances here. And, um, I, I would be very, very happy. One of the things that we also discussed was how the tram would terminate up on top and how it may terminate down at the shoreline. And I have brought Matt Wimmer from Marine Innovations of Fraser, Minnesota, who will be the general contractor on the project here to ask, answer any specific questions as to how, you know, what you might wonder about, uh, the termination. The, the requirement that I, I put upon Matt was, I want this to be very aesthetic. I want this to be an improvement to what we have. And by moving that shed behind the trees, the shed, I don't think will be visible except in winter when the birch clump loses its leaves. There are, there's a red pine down there and there's a white pine down there that also provide, uh, some screenage and I can always add more. The track would not take out, it's crazy, but it won't take out a shrub or a tree. You know, I'm on the, um, Big Sand Lake Association Board and my goal there is to preserve what we have and go a step farther and improve water quality and improve surrounding properties. I feel that this project would be an improvement to the conditions that currently exist.
We should maybe just deal with the lift and get that squared away and then come back to the shed, which I think is more controversial, my thought.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sir. Um, are all of the members, um, on board if we separate these two to Part One and Part Two, since they're separate findings of facts? Perfect. Okay, we will start with Part One with the lift, okay? Only pertaining to the lift of your application.
From a list standpoint, I, I'm interested in how, what, what the platform is gonna be like and how you're gonna mount it on top and at the, and at the bottom, uh, what kind of platform or step-off area will there be at the bottom of the lift? So, uh.
Can I?
Yeah, I was actually, I'll just open public comment and he can address it through public comment. Would that be suitable?
Oh, okay. That's whatever.
Yeah, go right ahead. Yeah, yep. And if you can just go to the podium and go ahead and please write your name and address on there and I'll go ahead and open the public comment.
Matthew Wimmer.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm at, uh, eleven twenty-five West, West Avenue in Detroit Lakes, Minnesota. Uh, can we go to the second page of that? Third, fourth, I'm not sure. There we go. Back here. So these are, these will be the landing platforms. As you can see, they're all, it's, they're all pervious. There's nothing impervious about them. In fact, the wood decking that lays on them is simply that laying in there. It's not screwed down. It's not fastened down. It can be, be removed in the wintertime if you like. Otherwise, they're all aluminum powder coated and no concrete. Everything gets pin piled into the ground. In fact, most of DNR agencies love our system because we, we reinforce the, we reinforce those, we reinforce the rooting systems and everything in those down, down those hills.
Matt, I think what Ken's question was, was if there was going to be, um, a platform exiting the tram onto the ground.
That is the exact same, this will be the exact same platform there. We have a set of steps running out of that to get them down to the ground. If you go back, we show
So there's not going to be a platform on the ground, just steps exiting the machine?
There's no platforms on the ground.
On the upper or the lower?
On the upper or the lower. Machines don't run into the ground. You'll see a small pit that we've put in, uh, he's drawn up, go up a little higher, I think. And that's simply to, if you stop right there, move up, you're gonna see that pit essentially sitting in this place right here so we can lower part of those down just to get you a little tighter to the ground, but it will never be on the ground.
Okay, so when you talk about, um, a stairway, it's obviously going to be only as wide as the tram, which is less than four feet or right at four feet?
Thirty inches wide and probably three steps, likely three steps.
Does that answer your question?
To get onto it and off of it both?
Correct.
Okay.
Cause up at the top, the elevations are different. You can, I don't forget any pictures of that in your application, but up at the very top, see, and here's a good view here. Essentially, that tram's gonna sit up and you're gonna come off where that table is. Where they, if you can drop down, you see the ground level, that's gonna come out and cantilever, cantilever out over the hill. So essentially, there won't be any steps there. You're gonna landscape right up into that area.
Okay, perfect.
And the, the hope is at the bottom that we landscape right out of there and don't have any other platforms of any kind or any blocking of wood or anything like that, just natural, just natural, uh, natural whatever's left on your beach. That's, that's the goal.
So your current design, um, is enabled by removing that shed. Your current, but you're, you're not, I thought when we were out there, you were looking at it coming down on the backside of that wall, but no, the way the, the way the plan is, like, that shed has to move for you to access the current area that has that, the, uh, block wall behind it.
Ken, by putting it and, and we haven't even run over this scenario, but if the shed was out of the way and we ran the track behind the shed, it's gonna be on ground. And when those tracks are on ground and you've got vegetation around them, grasses, you don't see them. They just blend right in.
Yeah, that's not the point to, I'm asking. The point is, you know, to enable that track to occur, you need that space where the shed is now.
Not necessarily to, to, for it to occur, we can move it over. For it to occur in the, in the, in the, uh, the track, the area that we like to occur in, so we don't have to remove any vegetation at all, that shed needs to shift over a couple of feet. We have to move at some point to keep us from removing any other vegetation on the project.
So you could come down behind the shed if you move the shed out a little bit?
Yeah, we can go that way, but we can't, there's trees this way. So if we try to push it over too far, we'll start running into trees. We're just trying to keep it. Generally, we, at Marine Innovations, we don't like, we try not to take out any trees if possible, cause we like to leave that rooting in there. It's just good for everything.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I'm just trying to envision that coming down and the shed being there, do you have room to get off of the tram and walk around the shed? No?
It's two feet wide currently.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
It's really not wide enough.
You can't keep the shed there.
Right, and you can see the shed right there in the photo.
Yeah.
And with the tram going down, if, that you wouldn't be able to access the inside of the shed, the contents in there.
Right, yeah, no, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
The shed has to move for them to install it the way they want. It has to move someplace or out of the way some way. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. While the public comment's open, I'll go ahead and see if there's any other public comments. Close public comment then for Part One. This is Veronica speaking. I see where this line of sight is. It's ideal for the, um, mechanical lift so that they don't have to remove any large vegetation, trees, et cetera. Um, the lift will be placed alongside the existing stair ax, stairway access. It has, like I said, minimal disruption. Um, I'm in favor of the mechanical lift. How everyone else feels?
I'm in favor.
Anyone prepared to make a motion for Part One then?
I can, I can do that.
Sure.
I make a motion that we accept, uh, Part One, the mech, the mechanized lift of Application seventeen V twenty-four. Um, and, uh, that we accept the findings of fact of the Environmental Services Department.
This is Tim. I'll second that.
Okay, Ken made a motion to, um, approve Part One, the mechanical lift as presented and adopt the staff's findings of fact. Tim, seconded the motion. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry. I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. Part One has been approved. Okay, now moving to Part Two. Relocation of the shed. And the bluff impact zone excavation.
There might be the most current one, um, if you page up. Yeah, keep going. Yep.
And this is your proposal?
Correct. To relocate the shed, I don't know if it's entirely possible. Um, but I've been talking with Timber Creek and they feel that they're strong men could do it. Um, it would be to move the shed, I would, I would take off, um, some of the railing of the steps going up to a landing. Uh, and then go back and then move the shed in, into the hill. Um, it would go back forty-eight inches and it would go up forty-two inches. And that would include the retaining wall block.
How, how wide is that flat area? I, I, I kind of envision it, but how, how actually wide is it from the edge of the, of the rip rap to the retaining wall? How wide is that? Can, can we look at, uh, maybe?
Maybe seven feet.
Is there, is it on any of the drawings? I couldn't find it. Eric, can you, can you check that?
I, I can, but I think our guess is gonna be as good as, as Mike's.
I know when I originally checked, it was six feet from the rip rap to, there was, there's a temporary storage.
It shows two feet here, so that would say it's ten feet. If the shed is eight feet, it shows two feet to the rip rap on the drawing. I'm just trying to confirm that. The drawing right there. See, it shows two feet there and eight, so that's ten feet. What I'm getting at is if you turn that sideways, the entrance is still from the front. You still have with four feet, you still have six feet of space between the rip rap and the shed and, and acts, and, and space for people to get off of the lift and walk without, without making major cuts and disruption in the shoreline where you're proposing it, is what I'm trying to get at.
So on that picture he's got up there, Ken, where would you put that shed that they just came?
I just turn it, I, clockwise ninety degrees and over a little bit because the, the lift is gonna come down right where it is.
Anywhere in this section along the wall?
Yeah, well, you can put it anywhere along the wall. I would, I would think you would wanna put it over closer to where the lift is. And that leaves you the open space at the bottom of your steps, but we're reluctant to you cutting a big gap in the hill and disruption of the vegetation and so on, when in fact, it looks like there's a reasonable solution to get your lift in and to keep that shed, so.
Yeah, my original thoughts were I was gonna try to hide as much of the whole project hide as much of the whole project as possible. You know, when I drive around the lake in a boat, there's a lot of people that have a white shed. And you can be, you know, fifteen hundred feet away from a white shed, and it just jumps out at you. Now, my shed is green, which blends in a little better, but I wanted to hide it behind those trees, so that it wouldn't be seen.
Yeah.
Eric, this is Tim speaking. Would he need a variance just because it's violating the setback rule of our storage sheds, six by eights? If he put it anywhere on that beach, would he still need a variance to move it?
They need to be twenty feet back.
No, it's, it's, we can't prove that it was placed illegally, and based on the information he gave us this evening with it being an eighty-two, at a minimum, for lack of being able to say otherwise, we'd have to treat it as legal nonconformity, so relocating it, as long as it doesn't go closer than it currently is to the lake, would be okay.
So he could shift it anywhere on that beach area without variance? He just, if once he cuts into that hillside, that's where it triggered the variance?
Yep, because that involves the bluff impact zone excavation.
Right, yeah.
This is Mike. I appreciate your concern for the aesthetics, and, and I also am concerned of the aesthetics, but I think it's outweighed by the potential damage by a cut, so I'd rather have it being more visible than maybe it is now, uh, in avoiding the cut. So I, I'm, I'm not in support of, of any cut into that hillside that close to the lake.
This is Tim, I agree with you, Mike.
And there is a practical solution.
Yeah. This is Veronica, I'm going to, I don't believe I had a public comment for part two, so I'm gonna open for the record, public comments. It's okay, there's no public comments.
Okay, one more thing?
Absolutely.
We just, I just, that area over there, the reason, the reason it's in my mind is we had considered, when, as we were surveying the property and where to put the system.
Yeah.
That was brought up, that side was brought up early, early in our first discussions. And he said, well, I don't, that area's where I've been, where the docks would go. So there's not a lot of, I don't know how off, how much you guys have been out there. As far as excavation goes, Mike, there's not a lot of excavation there. I think there's more of just some leveling and putting that thing on there. And then he would have room where the shed is now to shift most of his docks and use the rest of his beach for that, so as far as, and that's the only reason I bring it up, is I noticed that when we were there, that area is already fairly flat and open, with an area big enough for that four by eight shed.
Okay, and for the record, I'll need you to go ahead and state your name and address again, and don't have to write it again.
Yeah, Matthew Wimmer, eleven twenty-five West Avenue, Detroit Lakes, Minnesota.
Thank you for doing that. Okay, and if there's no other public comment, I'm going to close public comments. This is Veronica, I'm, I have mixed feelings. I do believe that the applicant does have some options on the, in the beach area, that he could move his shed. I know that we don't have documentation stating exactly how long it's been there, so it's best to our knowledge that he can retain it at that location or further from the water, from the ordinary high watermark, but he's still allowed to retain it. I'm kind of feeling towards Mike's, as far as denying the application, as just because I don't really like the idea of digging in and excavation in the bluff impact zone either, since we do have options. Ken, how are you feeling? Anyone have any thoughts?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm much more in line with just rotating that shed and not digging into the hillside. I think it's best for the lake, and it's practical and doable. And, uh, so I, that's where I'm at.
Anyone else have any comments? Anyone prepared to make a motion?
This is Mike, I'll make a motion to deny part two of seventeen V twenty-four and accept the staff findings of fact.
Okay, anyone have a second for the motion?
This is Ken, I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mike made a motion to deny part two of the application on the excavation, and adopted the staff's findings of facts. Ken seconded the motion. Take a vote. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. Part two has been denied. You will receive a decision letter from Environmental Services for part one and part two. It will give you the directions on what to do next. And give them just a couple of days, though, to go through tonight's meeting before they can have those documents prepared.
So, just a question. Can you go back to that previous slide? That showed the little beach area? Yep, good job. That would take me a half an hour. Where it says retaining wall on there, so anywhere covering up the word retaining wall is where it would get relocated to.
Are you asking, is there anywhere in that beach area? You can put the shed anywhere in that beach area, is that what you're asking? What are you saying?
Uh, that it would be up against the retaining wall, the existing retaining wall.
Yeah.
And it's marked by the word retaining wall.
Yeah.
So it would rotate it ninety degrees, and then lean it up against.
All the way over to your stairways, that's where Ken's drawing was.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it doesn't, this is Veronica speaking, it doesn't have to be, the, the only thing, what we're denying is the excavation over here.
Correct.
You're allowed to place it on the property, on, on the area, the vicinity, with the authorization from Environmental Services, because you've already had it to meet the guidelines of at least two feet or more in that vicinity, in this retaining wall area. So where your current, between that retaining wall is where you can move your, move your shed over.
Okay.
Yeah, so just rotate it and slide it however you need to. Again, there'll be, um, on your decision letter, it will give you guidance on what, what to do next, and if a permit needs to be pulled for the relocation and such. So.
I think I have to come in to you to get a permit for the tram.
Yep.
Application for, remember what it is?
Yeah, the land use.
The land use permit.
Land use permit, okay.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
You guys need to get home.
Yes. Thank you.
Your madam chairman works you too hard.
Madam chair's losing her voice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I believe, last item, um, nope. Next item on the agenda. Variance application eighteen dash B dash twenty by Charles and Mary Weingarten, part of government lot one, section twenty-nine, township one forty-three, range thirty-two, Lakeport Township on Cabocona Lake, a recreational development lake, parcels nineteen point two nine point zero zero six zero zero, and nineteen point two nine zero zero seven zero zero. Applicants are requesting an after-the-fact variance from section five oh seven point four of the shore land management ordinance for a fence that exceeds the forfeit maximum allowed height within the ordinary, one hundred foot ordinary high watermark setback, and the eight foot maximum height beyond the one hundred foot ordinary high watermark setback. Thank you for joining us. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Weingarten, and I'm here representing my parents, Charles and Mary Weingarten, at three five five one one Moonback Drive, La Porte, Minnesota.
Thank you, and please proceed with your request.
We are asking for a variance to leave our fence as is due to the very minimal nature of the violation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just for the record, the top of the fence rail was measured by staff, and being eight feet two inches, and the fence post caps were another couple of inches higher than the rail. Staff measured the closest point of the fence being eighty-nine feet from the ordinary high watermark, so we have eleven feet of the fence that exceeds the four foot height provision. Does anyone have any questions at this time?
I guess I-
Oh, I was gonna just say, this is Tim, um, and for the record, the, the reason for the after-the-fact is, um, of health and, um, the applicant representative not being there, so just for the record.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open for public comment, just for the record. Okay, thanks, sir, go ahead. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and write it down on the log, please.
Hi, my name is David Adams. Uh, I live in Fargo, at two hundred Fourth Avenue North, number three ten Fargo, North Dakota. And then at three five five three seven Moonback Drive, which is the property just to the west.
Okay. Neighboring property, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm here representing myself and my wife, who's out of town right now. In, in general, we're okay with the fence, but when it exceeded the maximum allowable height throughout the whole fence, except for the step down, that is actually away from the, uh, the lake. And the part that's really objectionable to us is the part that's within the setback, the hundred foot setback, because when we're sitting in our living room, looking to the east, it blocks our view of the lake. And I submitted a report, I don't know if you all have that? Those are pictures. So, um, as far as the materials are concerned, we're, we're fine with that. They actually matched our house, which was nice of them to do. But, uh, we don't like the fact that it's blocking our view, looking to the east of the lake, and our use and enjoyment of the lake, which we have every right to have.
Any other comments?
Nope, any questions?
No, sir, I thank you very much. Okay, seeing there's no one else in the audience, I'm gonna close public comments. First question I have is for the applicant, did you construct the fence on the property line? Or is it on inside and on your side of the property?
It's almost three feet inside our property.
Okay, so during the lot views, those stakes that we noticed, those were your property lines, so you actually came your way on the property line with the fence?
Yes, to my knowledge.
Yeah, do you maintain mowing on the other side of the fence? Between where your stakes are? Or does the neighboring property maintain any of that?
I guess.
Just curious, I mean, if you don't turn around the fence and mow, I was just curious.
I guess I haven't, it's, was in October, so we've only had winter.
Haven't had to do anything like that yet.
So I haven't, I guess, thought about that or decided that yet. Um, but, yes, that's our property.
Okay.
Can you make a comment on that?
Uh, no, sir, not at this time.
This is Tim speaking, uh, just to make a note, uh, the four foot high, eleven foot that's in violation towards the OHW, if that was, if that picture frame was removed, I could plant about six blue spruce fifteen feet high down that hillside. So it's very minimal peripheral view anyway from that house, from when I looked around the corner. I think there's been enough property sacrificed. And putting in blue spruce is just gonna take more yard out of the, out of this side, the applicant's side, so I'm in favor of leaving it, along with the two inches.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Any other comments or questions for the applicant? I guess, this is Veronica speaking, when the fence was created, it was brought to our attention, I'm not sure if it was your father, you're representing them. When the fence was erected, had you considered just utilizing a transitioning fence on that front one, just to help from obscuring that?
We, at first, we were gonna do the entire eight foot fence, so, um, we actually thought about transitioning, and again, um, due to the consideration of the neighbors and the close proximity, so we thought transitioning at six to four, was better for everyone. We, I guess we never thought of transitioning it towards a lake, because that to us is the most important kind of area where they're, they are and we are, um, for privacy. So that was never, I guess, thought of. But the other, transition the other way, um, again, that was in consideration for neighboring properties.
Okay, thank you.
Veronica, this is Ken. I think I'm aware that the reason for the four foot in the ordinance is to block view, but with the, with the, I think the letter that was sent by Mr. Adams, yes, and shows the picture, this one here. When I look at that, I don't see that ten feet or whatever it is of eight versus four feet having any significant impact to see, looking at the lake. There's a lot of shrubs and trees and stuff that are already, the picture that shows is a, one of the vertical structure elements in the front that blocks it. I think, I don't think with the idea, how do I say? The concept of why you want four feet is infringed at all. Plus, the, the owners have given up three feet of their property to the Adams. I think that's a reasonable trade-off, so I think I'm on Tim's side of the ledger here that, uh, I'd, I'd consider leaving it as it is.
Thank you, Ken. Um, I do agree with your, your view there. This photo was also taken with, during the fall, or, you know, leaf on conditions aren't even there yet, so once the leaves are all full-blown, their, their view is already somewhat obstructed just from the trees themselves. More so than that eleven foot section of fence, if what was reduced. I, I'm not opposed to the extra two inches height overall, because that's how the fence was created by the manufacturer. Anybody else have any comments?
This is Mike, my only comment, I, I'm in agreement with the three of you. If we do approve, I would want a condition that if there's ever repair work or replacement, that it needs to come into compliance.
That's a good, that's a good point.
Okay, so a possible condition would be if the fence is ever in need of repair in the, um, within the one hundred foot ordinary high watermark setback. It must-
I'd be careful of that with the tree falling down and needing repair.
I just meant in the-
So it'll be replaced, maybe, if it's ever replaced.
Replaced.
Okay, there we go. If the entire fence is ever replaced. Is that what you're saying, or just that section? The entire fence?
Just that.
Just that.
Okay.
I'm just referring to the, within the hundred feet.
Okay. Do you understand that?
So if something happened where I had to replace or repair it within, is it ten or eleven? Because the first time they measured, it was ten, and then-
Eleven feet, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess we would have to be in compliance if some- I guess we would have to be in compliance if something happened to that first ten.
First eleven feet, if a tree fell across it and you had to replace that, you gotta bring it down to the four-foot level when you replace it.
No, I meant not, not because of that. I mean, if they ever replaced the fence to go to their property line, then I would say. I'm saying if it's an accident by a tree, that she can just put it back to where it was.
I'm not saying that.
Oh, okay. That's what I meant.
I'm saying that if you're going to the trouble of replacing it, that's the time to bring it back into compliance.
Okay.
So what if it's vandalized?
That was my next concern. I think I'm just, I, I don't think a condition needs to be placed, in my opinion, at this time.
Yeah, I just missed what, what's the, uh, the topic right here?
The possible condition of needing to replace, meaning to return the fence to compliance if it ever needs replaced due to vandalism.
What did she just say?
What about vandalism?
Oh, vandalism.
What if somebody did something?
Run through with it.
Maybe if somebody don't like that fence or does something to it.
Well, I, I. Oh, God.
You ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Yeah.
This is Tim. I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented with no conditions. Is the variance in harmony with the general purposes of and intent of the official controls? Yes. Leaving this is not harming the lake. It is a minimal violation in the two-inch over the eight and also in the forty-some square feet. Number two, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by official control? Yes. The fence is reasonable, being almost three feet inside the applicant's property. And not limiting any peripheral lake view because of existing vegetation. Okay. Number three is a need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the current or prior property owners. Yes, the applicant's property is unique because of a variance that allowed the neighbors to build on an undersized lot. Meaning there, there's more of a desire for privacy. Number four, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? Yes, it's made up of single-family year-round homes on private lake lots. And number five, does the stated practical difficulty involve more than the economic considerations? Yes, economics are not cited as the practical difficulty.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Had a motion by Tim with findings of facts he created. Do I have a second?
This is Larry. I second.
Okay, motion by Tim, seconded by Larry to approve the after-the-fact variance application with the, Tim creating the findings of facts. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. Okay, you'll be receiving a decision letter from Environmental Services within the next two or three days. I'm giving you directions on what's the next step needed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one item left.
What happened to our applicant?
Variance application nineteen dash B dash twenty-four by Colin Metry, part of government lot three, section twenty-four, township one forty. Range thirty-four, Henry at a township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake, parcels thirteen point two four point zero two five zero zero. The applicant is requesting a variance from sections five oh two point two, five oh three, and seven oh three of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for proposed addition to a lakeside deck located within the thirty-foot top of bluff setback. And it does not appear that the applicant is here. So if everybody is in agreeance, then we can go ahead and proceed without the applicant. Otherwise, we can table for next month, if there's any need, if anyone sees the need.
This is Ken. I think there's a very serious violations with all the grading and the removal of all that vegetation on the bluff in the front yard. And I think the applicant should be here to discuss that and how and why, and what can be done to, to correct that situation before we go ahead. The deck is a minimal issue. It's the, it's the complete stripping of that whole bluff that concerns me.
Uh, this is Tim. He, he explained that as installing that riprap.
It's what?
He, that was disrupted because of all the riprap installed up and down that hillside. There's a rock, right? That's what he said at the lot view.
All I can say is, and I went back to maps on my, on my thing and on the county stuff, that whole bluff was trees and heavy vegetation. I don't know about the riprap on it, but, and, and the front yard the same way.
I think you asked him about it when we were there.
Yeah, I heard him talking about something riprap, but the more I thought about it, went home and I started, I started looking on maps and I realized he's cut out a bunch of big trees and everything. That's, that's just not according to ordinance for you to literally strip the shore impact zone of, of all vegetation and/or a bluff, right?
Do you have comments?
I spoke with my staff that had been out there to, I spoke with my staff that had been out there to view the property for the riprap permit.
Yeah.
And they mentioned that there were some of those trees that had been there that were dead or dying. And he had visited with Mr. Metry about the ability to remove those, so I just explained that when we were on-site, it was all under erosion control fabric and the upper part of the slope was void of grass that had been there. So my staff is, that was on-site is gonna go back out and take a look and then let me know if he feels that what was done is outside the bounds of what they discussed.
Two things. If you look at maps and the, and the verti, or the aerial view, it looks awful green for, for dead trees. Is my, my view. And, and the second thing, more importantly, I don't know what he planted. He said grass or whatever. That, that hillside needs more than just grass.
Oats, I think.
Huh?
Didn't he say oats?
That was in the.
Well, yeah, you always do that. Oats, if you're gonna plant something like that, you throw oats in with it because they grow up and, and hold the soil. And of course, he put those mats. I mean, that's good. But long-term, there's gotta be more than just grass there. As far as I'm concerned, there's gotta be something else to. Maybe I'm too emphatic about it, but I, I thought that was about as bad a rip and, rape and pillage that I've seen on a, on a bluff site.
This is Mike. I'd be in favor of tabling and having the applicant present before I'm willing to act on this.
Anybody else? Okay. Anyone care to make a motion then to table the application?
I'd be interested in what Environmental Services.
Okay. Okay, this is Veronica, then. I will make the motion to table the application for next month.
This is Mike. I'll second that.
Okay, I made a motion to table. Mike seconded. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye to table the application until next month.
That's tough for next month.
Okay, miscellaneous communications.
Uh, just that next month is looking to be similar in size to this month.
Thank you. Any other, anything else?
Mike, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
This is Ken. I'll second.
Okay, Mike made a motion to adjourn. Ken seconded. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
And Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye, meeting adjourned.